Lottery.
I shouldn't be saying this.
Oh, Elvin's getting tips.
All those consent things.
Maybe you'll suspend.
We don't listen to you. You have a proclamation. No.
Well, it's another glorious day in Pueblo, Colorado. I now called a meeting, the regular city council meeting. Today is Monday, March 24th. First up is the invocation. We have Pastor Richie Perko from the Pueblo Christian Center here. If you wish to stand and join us in the prayer, and then we will do the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray this evening. Dear God, we love you and we thank you so much. Lord, we thank you for our country, Lord. We thank you for the state of Colorado. We thank you for the city of Pueblo. And so with this heart of gratitude, God, we also thank you for tonight. Thank you for the slightly warmer weather, and we thank you for springtime. God, I pray for those in this room that need a touch from you, that need healing or comfort, Lord, that you would give them that tonight. And Lord, I pray that you would bless the city council, the first responders, and all of those who serve the city of Pueblo so well. God, I pray for provision and safety and guidance for them and their families. And tonight, God, I ask that you would give us wisdom for the discussions and the decisions that will be made that affect the city of Pueblo and the people who live here, Lord. Would you make us aware of your presence tonight? In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Perko. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mark Aliff.
Here.
Brett Boston.
Here.
Dennis Flores.
Here.
Roger Gomez.
Here.
Joe Latino.
Here.
Regina Maestri.
Here.
Sarah Martinez.
Everybody is here and accounted for. We have some special recognitions tonight. First up is a proclamation presentation for Week of the Young Child, April 5th through 11th, 2025. Angie Shehorn, Director of Children First, and Counselor Martinez is going to present.
I am so pleased to offer this proclamation to my friend Angie Shehorn. She's the Director of Children First and the President of the Early Childhood Council, and just an overall champion of early childhood. And it is proclaiming the Week of the Young Child, which is April 5th through April 11th. And it reads, "Whereas the demand for quality childcare continues to escalate as the number of single parents and married couples who participate in the workforce also increases. And statistics indicate the percentage of mothers with preschool age children who will join the workforce is increasingly substantial. And whereas each day in our community, thousands of working or college student parents place their infants and young children, our nation's most precious resource in the hands of childcare and early childhood education providers. And whereas early childhood care and education professionals render an invaluable service to families throughout the world and are as such responsible for our kids' future, contributing to our children's positive lifelong personal, academic, and vocational achievements. And whereas the Pueblo members of the National Association of the Education of Young Children celebrate this occasion with special activities honoring and acknowledging the vast importance of services early childhood care and education professionals provide and stressing the need to give our children quality childcare and early childhood education opportunities. Now therefore, we, the city council and the Board of County Commissioners, by the authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim the week of April 5th through April 11th as the week of the young child in the city and the county, and urge citizens of this community to join us in expressing our appreciation to all early childhood professionals for their commitment to care and education of our young children, and in honoring these fine professionals everywhere. And witness whereof, we have here on two set our hands and caused the seals of the city and the county of Pueblo, signed by Mark Aliff, the President of City Council, and Mr. Swearingen, the Chairman of County Commission. Congratulations, Angie.
I'd just like to share a few of the activities that we have going on. On April 15th at Mineral Palace Park, from 9:00 to 11:00, we have the Tree of Life Celebration. We have the Fun Fair on, thank you, on April the 12th from 9:00 to noon at the Ormond Campus of Pueblo Community College. It's free fun activities for all. And then we have Cherish the Child happening at the Pueblo Mall on April the 3rd from 4:30 to 6:30, just outside of JCPenney. Please come and celebrate with us.
All right, now we move to a proclamation presentation. Angie, you need to stay up here. For Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2025. And Counselor Latino is going to present this proclamation.
Thank you. Proclamation reads Child Abuse Prevention Month, April 2025. Whereas in 2024, 954 child maltreatment assessments were completed in our community. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input, action, and collaboration from everyone. And whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Pueblo. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical impacts. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, medical, mental health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to the social and emotional well-being of children. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of Pueblo, Colorado, by authority vested in us, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Pueblo, Colorado, and urge all citizens to support efforts to end child abuse in our community. And witness whereof, I have here on two set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Pueblo, Colorado to be affixed this 24th day of March, 2025. Mark Aliff, President of the Pueblo City Council.
Congratulations.
Next up is a recognition presentation, Best in Colorado Award. We like these. Greg Pedrosa, Director of Aviation, Pueblo Memorial Airport, presented by Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association, Mike Skinner, Director of Engineering, and Tom Peterson, the Executive Director. Welcome, guys. Do you have a microphone there?
Well, good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Council, Mayor Graham. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to recognize the team that rebuilt the Pueblo Airport, the runway and the taxiway. My name is Tom Peterson. I'm the Executive Director of the Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association. We're the statewide trade association representing the nine million ton asphalt industry of Colorado. And we're proud to recognize the team, the contractor, the consultant, and the city with our Best of Colorado Airport Award 2024. And the award was presented at a war dinner up in Denver on February 19th. We thank the mayor and the team for coming up, being recognized for that. And in any given year in Colorado, a thousand or more asphalt paving projects, 50 or some nominated for Best in Colorado, and 14 awards were given. And this one as Best in Colorado Airport category. So truly the best of the best, and many considered it the most coveted award. Why? Because of the FAA requirements for the material specifications, the timeframe to build it, and the tough window of opportunity to build it. And then the third, the tight framework for the grade and the alignment. And the contractor used GPS to set the alignment because it was variable depth milling of over 200,000 or square yard, 200,000 square yards of milling, about 36,000 tons of asphalt. So very challenging and done in an exceptional manner. And we've had our award program for 31 years. And without exception, award-winning projects are the result of a partnership that Greg Pedrosa, your Director of Aviation, the consultant in record, Dibble, represented by Mario Marasina, the project engineer, and by Mike Dirz from Pyramid Construction. So on behalf of our entire industry, on behalf of the Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association, we recognize the city of Pueblo, Pyramid Construction, and Dibble with our Best in Colorado Airport Award for 2024. Congratulations to all of you. Now, I noticed in the first two presentations, there were hugs. I guess we'll just shake hands, huh?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Great presentation. We now move into public forum, and we're going to start with Ed Perry. Come on down. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Just hit your microphone there. Turn your microphone on.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, first of all, I wanted to come here tonight to applaud Mayor Graham and city council for their unwavering support of Police Chief Knoller, his officers, Sheriff Dave Lucero, and their staffs for doing everything within their power to keep us all safe. The key words in my last sentence are "within their power." Law enforcement and our citizens are living the consequences of unacceptable, dangerous legislation that has been drafted and pushed through by mainly Democratic legislators for several years that has emboldened and coddled criminals, tied the hands of law enforcement and judges, and made our streets unsafe for law-abiding citizens. Local law enforcement and city leaders have blamed the Colorado Legislature for years for violent crime in Pueblo, including the shooting of the three officers on April 8th. Last week, Chief Knoller, in a press conference, said that the blood of the police officers lays at the steps of our Capitol. I agree with him 100%. Shame on these elected officials, past and present, and we all know who they are. One of the most egregious pieces of legislation is Senate Bill 20-217, in which shamefully, Colorado became the first state to eliminate qualified immunity for our men and women in blue who put their lives at risk daily, despite the possibility of being threatened with a lawsuit for simply doing their jobs. This bill needs to be eliminated. I'm asking city council members, along with the citizens of Pueblo, to contact our legislators and demand that this egregious bill be repealed. Another bill, Senate Bill 20-271, reclassified various criminal offenses, including changing some felonies such as second-degree burglary, criminal trespassing, and identity theft into misdemeanors. With that bill and other soft-on-crime legislation drafted and pushed through by lawmakers, it's no wonder that Pueblo and our state constantly rank as one of the most dangerous cities and states in the country. Where do our local state lawmakers stand? Referencing Chief Knoller's comment, Democratic State Senator Nick Heinrichsen told the chieftain, "It was irresponsible to point fingers at lawmakers before a full investigation is completed." Pueblo area Democratic Representatives Tish Maro and Matthew Martinez stated that they are waiting for the official report from the 10th Judicial Critical Incidents Team and the Colorado Bureau of Investigation. However, Republican State Representative Ty Winter, who represents Colorado House District 47, agreed with Chief Knoller, saying that we're seeing decriminalization of crime and soft-on-crime legislation come out of that building at the State House. And what's even worse, there are bills being presented to be tougher on crime that aren't seeing the light of day, they're dying in committees. We all know the criminal who shot the officers was a self-admitted MS-13 gang member with a lengthy rap sheet, including attempted murder. Why was he out on the streets in the first place to be able to ambush and shoot one officer and injure two others? I go back to an assertion I mentioned earlier. Even judges have their hands tied by criminal coddling legislation. They're allowing these criminals to post bond and get back on the streets. While our city is still numb and praying for the injured officers, House Democrats are running House Bill 25-1206, titled Extreme Indifference Offenses Not Causing Death, which decriminalizes and lowers penalties for assaults not causing death. Do you all see a pattern here? Then the Democrats wonder why their approval rating is an all-time low. What is the solution? We need to elect only tough-on-crime leaders and make sure that current ones who are doing little or nothing to solve these issues are sent packing. Thankfully, at the national level, which helps us here, President Trump and his administration have taken major steps to curb crime. For one thing, he has made illegal immigration illegal again, cutting illegal border crossings by 94%, and so far, more than 394 Trend del Alagoa gang members have been arrested and most deported. Shamefully, however, one Obama-appointed liberal judge tried to block these deportations of the illegals. Our current administration has also addressed the sometime violent protests at universities during which anti-Jewish, anti-American, pro-Hamas mobs were causing Jewish students to fear their safety. Also sadly, instead of celebrating Elon Musk's rescue of the astronauts, there are those now classified as domestic terrorists who are torching Teslas.
Mr. Perry, that's your five minutes, but thank you. We now move on to Devin Flores. Hello, Devin, thank you for coming.
Is this still on? All right, thank you for having me here tonight, counsel. So I am, I'm a resident of Pueblo. I live in Belmont in District 1. And I'm here to draw attention to something that I have seen happen a couple times with our locally elected politicians, some of yourselves included, that I have found a little alarming. So the last 18 months or so, I have heard many city officials speak about state legislation. And they speak about it in terms of inherently infringing upon the rights of the city and inhibiting upon the rights of the people of Pueblo. Last year, for example, during a discussion about the failed ordinance, which would have restricted abortion access in the city of Pueblo, Councilmember Maestri, you said, and I quote, "Ria was brought forth by state legislation. It was not brought forth by a vote of the people. When the Reproductive Health Equity Act was put in place, it was put in place up at the Capitol. The people didn't vote on it." At the time, Council President Aliff, you expressed a similar sentiment, saying that this law took away, quote, "the rights of Puebloans to decide what goes on in our own community." And now, not too long ago, Mayor Graham said something relatively similar at the Legislative Breakfast, with four legislators in the room, saying that two bills going through the state legislature right now are coming from, and I quote again, "big bad Denver to tell Pueblo what we can and cannot do." So to be blunt, I'm here to ask y'all to please cut that out. I'd like to remind the city's officials that we, the citizens of Pueblo, live in a representative democracy, one made up of many different layers. Y'all are one of those layers. You have a jurisdiction here in the city of Pueblo, and you have many responsibilities that we entrust in you. The state legislature is another one of those layers. You are not the only officials which we have elected. We elect state legislators to represent us in Denver. Those legislators are members of our community, who we also have entrusted with the power to represent us at that Capitol. They write bills and vote on them on our behalf, with the power that we have invested in them. Their number has included Danae Escarp, a local Puebloan who we elected in 2020 to represent us at the State House and who, working on our behalf, co-wrote and sponsored the Reproductive Health Equity Act. That bill was not big bad Denver telling us what to do. It came out of our community and was written by a representative we elected to do just that, to write laws and represent our community at the state level. It's not like Denver is the only ones who get to elect legislators at the state level. We do that too. Those are people from our community, and they represent us. So I'm here to ask y'all to please cut out this confrontational language and stop driving a wedge in the relationship between our city's government and our state's government. These are two parts of a big system that is built to work together in order to get things done. And I'm asking you, please, to, again, work with legislators to get these things done. It's not coming from an outside force. It's not coming down just from Denver. It's coming from communities all across Colorado, including our community. This is why we elect legislators. It's coming from people who might be our friends, they might be our neighbors, they might have children going to the same school as your children. They represent our community, and we entrusted them to do that for a reason. They were elected. So in short, every time I hear a city official talking about legislation like it's an attack on our community, that's coming, it's coming from Denver, and it's going to tell us what to do, that's, to be frank, it feels kind of like a slap in the face to Pueblo's democratic rights. We elected these legislators. I'm not asking that you agree with everything that they want to do. I'm asking that you work with them in order to get done what's good for Pueblo. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Dante. Hello, Ken, thank you for coming.
Thank you. I was going to talk about energy, but there's also a resolution, so I'm going to speak on that. So I'm changing my talk a little bit. We need to get rid of Black Hills. They're terrible for the city. They're the most expensive utility in the state. And anyway, I wanted to talk a little bit about, more about other energy things that are coming up. Excuse me a second. We, we are kind of at the center of energy in Colorado because Pueblo supplies a lot of energy to Denver, to the Denver area in Excel's territory. And Excel is by far the largest utility in Colorado. Some of the ideas that we have and are going to try to promote in the future just don't make a lot of sense. And one of that is nuclear power. And I just wanted to, by the time, by the time that, if we chose to do that, by the time it got built, a lot of us are going to be dead because it takes such a long time. I want to talk about the recent nuclear facilities in North Carolina, the Vogel Plant. Construction began in 2009 with initial completion target of 2016. It achieved commercial operation by 2013, or 2023, excuse me. Seven years late. Similarly, construction commenced in 2009 with the expectation of a completion in 2017 for Unit 4. It entered commercial operation April 29th, 2024. Also reflecting a delay of about seven years. And, you know, the permitting process takes about eight years, so add that into the, into the process. Original estimates of $14 billion had escalated to $34 billion. It quadrupled the cost of the electricity for those people. And we're worried about our high electric costs today. I don't think we want to quadruple our cost of electricity here. So nuclear just is a poor choice. Comparing the energy job numbers, fossil fuel jobs are estimated about 600,000 to 700,000 people. Renewable energy jobs in, including solar, wind, energy efficiency, are estimated to employ about 3.5 million people. That's seven times the number of people. Because actually, it's more than that. As a result, the renewable energy sector now employs five times more people than the fossil fuel sector in the US. So if we really want to grow jobs, let's grow it in the area that's going to give us low, low-cost energy. And I think, you know, we're going to have to figure out this tax base issue some other way. Because expensive utility holds us back, and I think it really damages our economy. So, you know, the talk of building compute centers may not make a lot of sense because they're going to have to be subsidized. And I don't think we, the ratepayers, want to subsidize those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Chapman. Hello, thank you for coming.
Hello. First, I'm here first to thank the Police Department, Sheriff's Department, State Patrol, AMR, everybody, dispatchers, everybody that was involved in what happened last week. What an ugly thing that happened to our town. I pray for them all the time. I pray for the people who, the ones that are injured, for their families, and the ones that go out every day that put on that uniform to keep our town safe. I am, I have members of my family who have retired from law enforcement, who are in law enforcement, and who have done, spent their lives saving and for our town. I have very good friends who are in law enforcement right now. And I'll tell you what, it is not an easy job. And as someone who is very dear and close to some of these people, you hear a siren and you get a phone call that your loved one is in a terrible situation. Until you're in that spot, you don't know. So all these people who see on a daily basis, think it's okay to scream and call down the Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, and all who keep us safe, and the mayor, well, PD's hiring. If you can stand up and do the job they do every day, they're hiring. If you think you can walk into a situation when your life is on the line, while your family is home praying that you get home safe, PD is hiring. Anyone else that can do that and step up and say that, well, then go and apply. The mayor has given them many chances, many times, openings to help us get more police officers. So there's many openings for anybody. And as far as this recall for the mayor, I am, I am all for nonprofit. I'm all for nonprofit. But people, we have to educate ourselves. We have over 800 nonprofits in this town, over 800. We need to stop and take a look at that. If you don't know and you have questions, instead of sitting back and being so ugly, make an appointment, talk to her, talk to your city council. I've sat and talked to the mayor. And we've said, she opened up, she talked to me. We have a whole different atmosphere now, especially with the PD. But it's time that we stop the ugliness and the just calling people down in our town. I listen to this all the time, even on the text thread. People are so nasty, so ugly, and these are adults. These are adults. We are adults. We're not all going to agree with the mayor. We're not all going to agree with the city council. We're not all going to agree with the PD. So, big deal. Go to sleep, get up in the morning, it's a new day. Get over yourselves. Grow up. Let's make this town better. We're better. Pueblo is so much better than this. There, she's trying to lead us, you guys are trying to help. I pray for you all every day, especially the Police Department. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Charlie Fettie. Charlie Fetty. Hello, Mr. Fetty. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me. I would like to talk about the recall and how I think that it's very clear that this is racketeering by Black Hills Energy, racketeering and extortion. And I think that we should seriously consider jumping into legal action now. And I say that is, we don't know what the future holds, but this is probably going to end up in the courts. And they've lost it already, in my opinion. I've been through things, similar things like this. And in their aggression, they lost already. And we won. All we have to do is stick together and come together and do a resolution that we will not stand. We will not stand for this. We have to come together and defend our mayor and our sovereignty in Pueblo. Who do you stand with, Denver or South Dakota? And I'd like to kind of jump around a little bit here. Having said that, on economic development, Pueblo has no better prospect or bet to bring money to Pueblo than to purchase the steel mill from the Russians. If you want to bring business to Pueblo, they will come to Pueblo if there's money here. That's what will bring businesses to Pueblo. And the Russian rubles are now literally worth gold. Since Pueblo decided to declare war on Russia and try and steal the steel mill, I'm just going to say it out, out, out now, instead of buying it and purchasing it legitimately. The rubles are literally worth gold now. The US dollar is not worth the printed, the paper it's printed on digitally, counterfeited. If Russia will support us, President Trump will support us. I talked to Jeff Shaw the last time during the PEDCO deal at the end of it. And he told me that he would ask, I don't know how serious he was. He may have just been putting me off as usual, as, as always has been. But I'm telling you, I was the president of the Steel Workers Union. I was in contact, I worked with the Russians, I worked with Everas, the Russian part of it. And I made offers, public and private, to buy the mill. I know what I'm talking about. And I'm telling you, we can, there's no better route for Pueblo than to pursue purchasing the steel mill from the Russians. I, I'm going to be putting in a proposal for the Steel Works Center of the West. And I'm going to ask for support. I, I intend to, instead of electric bicycles, class two electric bicycles, I intend to do class two electric tricycles, which the people that we intend to help, a lot of them can't even ride a bicycle. But they can ride a tricycle. A tricycle holds them up. And it can carry cargo. The ones I'm suggesting actually are Rickshaw designed. You can carry your kids, you can take your kids to the lake and go fishing. And it's a, I, I gave you a, a first draft of that, Your Honor, and, and Mark. And I, I, I just, I, I, I don't, I just want to keep them honest. We've, we have a history and I don't know how that'll go. I, I'm a Christian and I, I think God has set all this up. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fetty. Ted Freeman. Hello, Mr. Freeman.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, let me get into this. Okay, a group of Pueblo citizens believe the mayor should be recalled and have listed a number of opinions, not necessarily facts, on a petition. These opinions, without questions, do not justify a recall on a singular, mixed or total number basis. Every individual must come to their own conclusion, and I have come to mine. No recall. One, failure to show fiscal responsibility with the city's budget. A, $2 million acquisition slash remodel of 650 Debar Avenue. This will be used for city employee activities. B, proposing $1,000 per square foot bus facility projects. That's ridiculous. It don't exist. C, giving extravagant raises. These are the kind of raises that are, that have been given to, to police to help with recruitment. D, hiring of necessary staff. Hire two urgently needed people in the finance department. Let's go to two. Stop funding, strip, strip, stop stripping funding away from nonprofits while simultaneously squandering tax money. The funding of nonprofits is taxpayer money. And if it's shown that a nonprofit is not operating efficiently, it should not expect to be paid what it thinks it deserves. If a nonprofit wants slash needs money, it should do its own fundraising. Three, failure to reduce crime down to comparable state levels. Financially, the mayor and the city has done everything possible to lower the crime rate in Pueblo by increasing the police pay scale, investing in technology in a crime center, installing numerous surveillance cameras and more improved training. Our social environment is a major part of this problem. Four, using police and fire department staff to retaliate against small business owners and others who oppose her. I know the police officer, fire chief and the mayor. And I believe that the allegations stated above must be substantiated with factual information or considered void. Five, disregard for historic information, preservation. The mayor is for historic preservation. Six, I'm going to go down. Allowing illegal ordinances and practices to be proposed, leading to costly expenses. The mayor's primary responsibility is the operation of the city, offering functional and safe environment to its citizens by implementing the laws passed by the city council. Seven, failure to address Pueblo's critically unhoused population crisis, population crisis, dispensing people from the encampments who downed into downtown and residential areas without land or adequate shelter in place. The mayor expressed her concern for both the homeless and the trash issues during her campaign. She has responded by both by having the city purchased a former rescue mission and a second building to house more homeless people. These facilities will be serviced by an organization under contract to the city. The cleanup of trash along the Fountain Creek serves two purposes. One, cleanup of the unhealthy conditions which people were living in. And two, beautiful location along the Fountain Creek. Order demolition in a contaminated EPA super site without regard to public health or applicable law. The site referred to was designated by EPA as contaminated and unsafe for human life. The people that were living in the location were requested to leave and the area was cleaned up, not demolished, with the blessing of the EPA.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. We now move to council member and mayor commentary. Mayor Graham.
Thank you, President Aliff. I have quite a few updates tonight. First, I wanted to provide an update on the three officers who were shot multiple times on Tuesday evening, as you all know. Two are home and resting and one is still hospitalized with the very long road of recovery ahead of them. It's been a very emotional and somber week for the police department and the city of Pueblo. I'd like to thank the entire community for coming out and offering your support to the police department. And I also like to thank Councilor Dennis Flores and Councilor Joe Latino. Mr. Latino spent the night on Tuesday night with the officer's family. And so that was great to have you both there checking on your, your people. On a good note, January sales tax is up 1.1%. So hopefully we keep up with that way. To Mr. Flores, who came and talked about the legislation and what we're doing as a city and what we can do as city councilors and, and to the mayor. And when he talks about how the legislators won't, that we won't work with the legislators, I think that there's a difference of opinion there. And I would say the legislators won't work with us, especially when they're trying to pass two bills that will affect municipal court in the city. We were not contacted by the legislators who brought those proposals forward. We went up and spoke, spoke against, you know, told the committee that we were not contacted by our legislators. And so, Mr. Flores, I would say, why, why should we work with them when they don't want to work with us? President Aliff and I have been hosting a series of town halls in relation to the May 6 ballot measure. We had one last Thursday night that was well attended. And we have another one this Wednesday at 5:45 at the Barkman Library. So I encourage the citizens, if you have questions as it relates to the Black Hills Energy Study or the May 6 election, to come to the town halls and be provided information. And we'll be happy to answer any questions. Tonight on the agenda on first reading, you're going to see N6, which is an agenda item to fund the RFP for the remaining 2025 of the shelter. I was able to go through several projects over the last several years and found existing balances and projects that we were able to close out and come up with enough funding, $464,000 to fund the shelter through the end of 2025. So I'm going to be asking for your support moving forward with the RFP. Another update that I have to provide for you on that note is we had our final inspection today with Carinshire for the shelter. They anticipate Safe Side will be rolled in and be a partner next week. And so we will again be providing, being provided food from Carinshire. Special thank you to Mike Purdy with his assistance in this over the last five months. It's been really hard since the previous shelter lost the Carinshire allocation and the food. And we've been having to purchase food or get donations from other co-ops. And then lastly, as you know, my chief of staff just passed out an email correspondence that I received last week from a city counselor. And you know, I, President Aliff, you know, disagreed that this was the, the arena for me to do this tonight. But I think that I disagree with that. Mr. Gomez passed out for his city council work session retreat, public policy and what he wants to see for the city council moving forward. And as I'm looking at it right now, it talks about not having vulgar statements, clothing or signs, and respect for elected officials in the audience and the clear lines of authority between the city council and the mayor. Over the last several weeks, you've received correspondence from me that have come from Councilor Gomez as it relates to staff. I find that these emails have been wildly disrespectful to my staff members. And I am bringing them all to your attention tonight and the proper lines of communication between the mayor, her staff and the city council as it relates to giving orders to city council or having communication, period. These correspondence were sent to President Aliff over the last couple of weeks in which I had asked for him to have discussions with Councilor Gomez with. I know those discussions were had, but that didn't seem to end the issue. So, you know, I'd like to say what you say between yourselves on your own emails and not city emails to each other, to other elected officials, is much different than what you say to my staff at the city of Pueblo. And I do not appreciate Councilor Gomez's emails to my chief of staff quoting this. Hey, I got my peepee whacked once already and it hurts so good, just saying. Look, Goldilocks doesn't scare me and she can't hold her breath and stomp her feet with all that she wants. I think that this is sexual harassment when it comes to you sending emails to my staff members, not to me, about what you think I do or don't do on my time. And I have asked the city attorney to draft a memo and a policy for the city council. And it will look something similar to what I passed out to all of you in the professional workplace conduct on how we need to demonstrate our commitment to our city's goals, be mature and be cooperative professionals, be truthful and have a standard when it comes to how you speak to my staff within the city. I don't care what you do on your own times. I don't care what you say to each other. I don't care what you say to me. But to put in email a sexual comment to my city staff is not tolerable and I'm not going to stand for it.
Counselor Gomez.
I'm going to read this real quickly. In an effort to accurately frame the current disagreement between myself and the mayor, I need to remind the public that the constituent need to be aware in order to keep these matters in context. Is the electorate, as you know, are aware that the mayors and department heads and some of senior levels staff are making salaries as well as a six figures? For example, and I'll explain this in a minute. For example, city council attorney Carla Sykes starting salary 169 to 207 by the year's end. Her deputy city council Harley Goodfords salary range starts 145 to 162. Public Works Director Andrew Hayes salary range starts at 148 to 181. Police Chief Nolan, 148 to 183 by the end of the year. One question to all of you, are taxpayers getting your money's worth? So yeah, I'm frustrated and yeah, I'll own up to that. But let me keep, keep on going here. Why is this so important for the taxpayers to understand? Because as much as I would like to think that this council has the power of the purse strings, the mayor has the power to trump all of it with lucrative termination strings of staff. As you know, over my short career on council, I had been complimentary and complained about Mayor Graham's tactics and openly transparently in the best I can. However, I have no choice but to address the tactic that she's stooping to in an effort to discredit me or any other person who has the courage to challenge her. As I've noted in the past, council meetings, the mayor has instructed city council attorney department heads not to provide me with any information and forced me to use Cora at a personal cost of $41 an hour. Of course, she'll deny it and rely on the cooperation from some of her very well-paid staff members that she's banned me from. She's also banned me from talking to the chief of staff. And I demand to go, I need to speak with the department heads. I can't get through them now because she's also said I cannot talk to the chief of staff, Brian McCain. This is all under the abuse excuse allegation that I got angry with her department heads, which I did. And I got fed up with no response, nobody calling me back, nobody giving me information so I can represent my district. This is all under the abuse excuse. I see, I'll just put it this way. She deserves Black Hills Energy and they deserve her. She's mean and she's, she can get very, she comes here with people that come in here and she, she berates them when they're coming up and trying to do testimony. Let me finish. Of course, she'll, she'll deny it and rely on the cooperation below this. Then she banned me from talking to the chief of staff. I need to speak with the department. I can't. This is all, I see her getting the whole truth, but maybe the eventual deposition is what we're going to need to get to the bottom of it. As a duly elected official, I'm going to get the whole truth. And I'm going to work with any elected official that I can. But I'm, I don't see this mayor incapable of compromise. She refuses to listen to constituents or the electorate and she mistakenly receives subjects that her, she's their subjects and not her boss. As you may know, the chief of staff, Brian McCain, and I had several positions, health service positions as former district directors for Congressman Scott Tiffin and Director Congressman Scott McGinnis. I've had numerous conversations with Mr. McCain, whose conversations were not exactly complimentary of the mayor. But I held those in mutual confidence and dismissed it as just small workplace banter. And that's all it was. I'm talking about banter that came from a fourth grade catechism class when I used to get struck on the knuckles by Sister John Michael back in the day. But it was just in fun, it was just a joke, it wasn't meant to hurt and was not meant to be shared with his boss. So for all this, what we, what we're saying to do in reference to any of this, you need to understand that she is, excuse me- excuse me, I'll take the back. In closing, let's put it this way, in closing, this is a short glimpse of my family's name works just this past weekend alone, and this is why I got frustrated. Friday night, we had three young, brave, all police officers who were seriously injured in an estimated 80-round chopperage. I don't know how correct, but that's what I heard, catty-cornered to my front door, my front door on, across the way on Cedar and Mazer. Saturday night, the fire department put out a fire, picket fence in my alley inches away from my back fence. This is occurring almost every night in Pueblo, Sunday night. This is just the weekend. They left the scene without lights and sirens when they came to my neighbor's house and took him out in a stretcher. And I don't know if he was dead or alive, no lights, no sirens. So if these, if this is the best she has to come after me about fourth grade banter because I stand up to her, and I will continue standing up to her. So please excuse me as I try to keep my family barricaded in the house with my shotgun and a Glock. So if I sound a little frustrated, you bet. But I am an elected official. I refuse to sit down and shut up. Thank you.
Counselor Boston.
Breathe. Take a second to take all that in. First off, I would like to express my gratitude to the police department, sheriff's department, the city, everybody involved, and what transpired last week. As stated earlier, to run in the direction of harm's way to protect and serve this community is something that not enough people have respect for, I think, in this day and age. When that many rounds are being fired, and you put your own life on the line, not taking a second thought to go and defend others and take out a threat to this community. The, the, the bridge lining that we had in honor of the first officer being released, Captain, it was beautiful to see how many people showed up for that, all the lights, the flag. It was just a beautiful scene. I'm happy to hear that all the officers are on the road to recovery and that the threat was dismissed. So just kudos to everyone involved in that and the community's support that we received in reference to the legislators. As Mayor Graham said earlier, when you were out of the room, you know, I think it is, you hear the outpour from the community after an incident like this happens, how preventable it could have been. And yeah, maybe they are elected to represent the citizens and those people in certain communities. And I think when we're saying they come from Denver, that's just because that's where the meetings are held. We know that they represent the entire state. But I would say the mass amount of people that I hear are not satisfied with the job they are doing. So when I'm getting complaints from the citizens that this community is unsafe, you know, we need to do more. I don't have the power to do the things that I, that's not within our power to pass the things that we need to to make them feel answered. So what do we have to do? We have to talk to them because they do hold that power. So I guess that is why you could say we call them out, or we try to ask people to call them because it's not our jurisdiction. So we try to point them in the direction of the jurisdiction that does have that power. In reference to Mr. Donsey, I don't know about anything nuclear that's been discussed besides the ballot measure that failed years ago. So I don't know if anything in this short term is going to be coming. But in reference to what was just spoken about earlier, I just feel that I, in the time that I've been on council, this is just kind of the most divided I've seen us, and I've, you know, I've seen a lot of things going on. I just think there's a certain level of professionalism that we do need to hold. I understand that you're frustrated with certain things that may be happening, but ever since I got on council, I was told, you know, if I want to get something done, we talk to city staff, at least CC them on an email with the department head or whatever issue we're trying to get done. Because that, as a city council, we are not allowed to direct city staff necessarily. We have to have the Chief of Staff direct staff. But when we have a concern and we bring it to his attention, we're kind of, he's kind of the middleman to allow us to get things done. So anytime I've talked to a department head through Brian McCain, I've gotten things accomplished. Sometimes they don't reply instantly. It's okay to follow up. You know, there's a lot of things going on in the city at once. You know, a lot of these apartments are stretched thin in some things. But it's okay to follow up. I understand you're frustrated with things going on in your district, but there are a lot of good things that are about to be going on in your district as well. We're well aware of the blight, the crime, things that are running through Bessemer, but we just put in a pura zone there, and there's a lot of good things on the up and up coming to Bessemer. And I understand that you want to represent your constituents, and I understand that you want to do right by your community. But I think there's a certain way to go about it. And, you know, I think a man that's done the things that you've done and, you know, had the professional career that you have had, that, you know, you know, right from wrong. And I understand it may not have been meant the way it came out. But, you know, we need to hold ourselves to a higher standard. We need to represent our constituents the right way. And I just think as a collective body here, we need to set the example. We need to have respect for each other. We need to work together and fighting with each other. You know, it's okay to call someone out when they're wrong. I know me and Heather don't agree on everything, you know, and we've had disagreements ourselves, but there's a way to go about it. But in order to move this community forward, there's a right way and a wrong way to do it. And I think we just need to focus on the right way to do things and trying to move this community forward in the right way. Thank you.
Counselor Latino.
Thank you. First of all, I want to commend the police department. And I want to ask you all to continue to pray for those officers that were shot, injured. It was very heartwarming for me to spend the evening and the early part of the morning with their families. You learn a lot about people. They put their lives on the line for this community every single day. I followed up the next day and went and was able to visit after I left at 3 o'clock in the morning. I came back the next day and was able to visit briefly with the officers who had been injured. Again, thank you. And I want to thank their families. And if I get emotional, it's because that's me. I'm able to tell you, take a flying leap at the moon and use another word, but that's me. So God bless you. Thank you. And this, this is a great community. We all make mistakes. We just, we have to work with each other, you know? It's called a team. I've had some comments from my constituency as it relates to the the sales tax. I've had some going on groceries. I have some communication from people in my community with their concerns and that I supported the purchase of the PBR building. Again, I'm not perfect. I may make mistakes. But hopefully, we can, we can work together and we can do good things. And I think that we're headed in that direction in a lot of instances. And again, thank you, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Counselor Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things. One, I wanted to you know, public serving is a thankless job. So to all the PD officers who are in this room right now, to all, to all the former PD officers who are in this room right now, thank you for what you did. Thank you for what you do every day. To Ms. Chapman's point, I literally can't imagine what it's like being a mom of a law enforcement officer. It's hard, and I also think that their families don't ever get thanked. And so thank you and the families too, because they, they also sacrifice a lot. And I can't imagine getting that call. So my, I really hope that the three wounded officers come back stronger and healthier than they were before. Two, last week, I don't even know, two weeks ago? I don't know. I went to the Boys and Girls Club Dinner, and it was their Champions of Youth Dinner. It's their annual dinner where every day, every year they get to recognize different young people in the community, and they do it from elementary school kids to middle school kids to high school kids. And it's such a great, it's one of my favorite events because it's a great showcase for all of the talented young people that we have here in the community. The Youth of the Year this year, by a very competitive process, her name is Sammy Ortman. And her speech was spectacular. She talked about how being involved in Boys and Girls Club has changed her life and how how much she's learned in terms of being, you know, a young adult and what it's like to budget and having a pro-social and safe space like that really has changed her life. And the more that I thought about this, the more that I am really hopeful that that's the, those are the types of kids that we want as our future leaders, right? The future, the future changemakers, the future folks that are the mayor, the future folks that are on this council. And I hope that they do way better than what this current council is doing. You know, I've, I, I, we have seven core values as part of city council, only seven. Seven values that we have to uphold. One of which is respectful. One of which is professionalism. And Counselor Gomez, your emails were not only just gross, belittling, condescending, and mean, and name-calling. They did, they were, they were not aligned with our values. As a young woman in politics, this is hard. This is one of the hardest things that I have ever done. And I get name-called all the time. Some of, some of you in the audience have name-called me all the time on social media. To do it to staff who work beyond 40 hours a week is unprofessional. It's disrespectful. I have seen the emails to our own Public Affairs Director name-calling her when she goes above and beyond to meet our needs. I have seen the emails talking grossly about our Public Works Department Director. And now you want to challenge Mayor on the dais and, and in the, and I won't, I won't stand for it. You say that you're frustrated and you're fed up. There's a way to be frustrated and fed up that's professional. And I'll tell you what, as someone who has a full-time job right now, if I would have ever sent an email like that, I would have gotten fired on the spot. You say that it's small workplace banter just back in the day. It's 2025. That's not small place workplace banter anymore. I'm calling for a formal censor on Counselor Gomez for his actions of how he's talking to staff, how he's talking to Mayor Graham. I am in full support of this guiding. It's a shame that we have to have words on a paper to, to make us be like adults. Ms. Chapman, Ms. Chapman said earlier, well, I literally wrote it down, we are adults. We're adults, and yet we have to be guided on how to talk to one another just because we're frustrated? That's ridiculous. And our staff deserve better. Our citizens sitting here deserve better. They deserve a council that's functional, that's respectful to not only each other, to the, to the mayor and, and to constituents. They deserve better.
I can respond it five different times.
Counselor Flores.
You know, I've, I've never been in a situation like the other night when the police officers were shot. I'm a Vietnam veteran, and I had never, ever been in a situation like I was the other night. And let me explain. Many of you know my girlfriend. Her name is Denise, and one of the police officers was her nephew, so it was really close to home. But walking into the back part of the emergency room, it was totally chaotic. People rushing everywhere, 10 people around one of the officer's beds. It was, it was something you would see in a movie. But everyone was working, running around, and then there was the families. Even, even in wartime, when there's either a death or there's someone being shot, you don't have the family surrounding that situation. So you had, you had wives, you had mothers, you had children that were in the middle of this chaos. And I thought to myself the last couple of days that everyone should experience that just to see the feeling of helplessness, the helplessness, the emotion of walking up to a family member and looking at the panic in their eyes. It was, it was, it was just an unbelievable scene. It was almost like a bad dream. You felt like you were in a fog. And you never realize what a difficult job our first responders have. You know, to, I mean, you couldn't possibly at that moment thank these people enough. And I was, I was, you know, kind of changed a lot of, of how I felt about, you know, you go on with your busy day. You just take police officers and firemen and first responders. You just take them for granted all the time. And you don't realize how critical that we need them. And then number two, how their families must feel and have that fear instilled in them that they might not see them. And I just, you know, want everyone, I think, in the city of Pueblo to say thank you to these brave people. And I am certainly grateful, you know, that we have two officers that have been released from the hospital, and they got to go home and recuperate. But we still have one officer that's still in the hospital. And all, I would urge everyone in the community to, to think about this situation and, and pray for these individuals, not, not only them, but our entire first responders, because they do an amazing job. And you know, we just, we just hope that this will never happen again. Thank you.
Counselor Meister.
I kind of dreaded these conversations today because I do want to thank all first responders. I don't want to politically grandstand about it. As a mother of an officer, a deputy for the Sheriff's Department, I remember when he called me from the emergency room when a lady unleashed her three pit bulls on him when he was just taking an accident report. And he said, you know, but for the grace of God, I happened to hear them coming from behind. And I turned and pulled my taser, and the one that was coming for my upper body, I was able to hit with a taser, which fell on the one that was taking, trying to take me down by my leg. And we all know that pit bulls are lethal weapons. And I think that it's really hard because the office, it hits the blue families across the, across the community. My grandchildren came home and were so upset about the that, you know, thankful it wasn't their father, but and really was really, really sad about who's, who, for the kids whose fathers that was. And, you know, like Ms. Chapman says, you know, it, they don't know how it affects just the blue community as a whole. And so, and then I also personally myself, you know, think that there's got to be some privacy to it, you know, the community, we, the officers know the communities behind them because we're all behind them, all the first responders in these situations. And, you know, as a mother, I wanted to take that lady out that put, that did that to my son. To this day, they still won't tell me where she lives. But that's just the emotions that the blue families go through because they're helpless. They're helpless. They're here. They're supporting their family. They're loving their family. And they put their family member out there in danger way every single day. And it's, it's tough. It's really tough. And so, but we all hope that we're going to make some things here happen in our community that's going to help, you know, the police and restore law and justice in our community, restore respect to our blue community. And the one thing I did do this week is I attended the openings of the pools down at the Arkansas River by the ribbon coating. What a beautiful, what a beautiful plan, what a beautiful finish of that, that area. A great recreational spot. I'm excited about it because it's a great spot. I'm, I was a little taken aback when they asked, you know, when they said that, you know, the hope that the city gets the parking lot paved. you know, when they said that, you know, the help that the city gets the parking lot paved and, and the trash receptacles. And so I'm, I want to look into see what is our part in that and that we're getting that finished. Because it does, it needs, it still needs some extra stuff, but oh my gosh, what a really nice place. I think people are going to be coming from different places, coming in to enjoy that recreational area. The other thing is I would also like to give a shout out to the Child Advocacy, Advocacy Center for Child Abuse Month. They are on the front lines of receiving the children that have been abused and they help them through that process. This is that time of year where I, I don't want to forget them. And then also Mr. Flores that came and spoke. You know, we are responding to the calls that we get, the concerns from the citizen as to why is this happening? Mayor Graham and I, when we were on council, we instituted and searched for a new lobbyist. Because previous to us, there wasn't a lobbyist in coming to council and visiting and telling us what was going on up at the state house. Where were these bills at? And that's how a lot of those bills got passed. Council was not even aware. And I think you want to talk about, I think that's because, you know, there was party favor at that time. And they're not going to go and speak against a Democrat-led city is not going to go and speak against their Democrat-led state house. But I will say that there were a lot of names on that bill from both parties that makes it disappointing. That approved that bill. And so how we fix, how we're going to fix that as a whole coming up here in the future, but we do need to, we do need to change those things. And Mayor Graham, I agree with you 100% in regards to your complaint here about Mr. Counselor Gomez and, and the things he said. But you know, I'm just going to say, we know because I'm being told all the time, you know, I say something, I get my medicine. And I just take that medicine and I move on. And we don't, you know, we don't have, the stuff that's said against me is very public. It's very rude. Some of it's true, some of it's not true. But I just take my medicine because the, we've been told, we signed up for this. This is what we have to endure. So I endure it. And you know, there's, we, you know, I went after Dan Kogosik for what he did to Lori Winter. He was a city employee. And so there, there are a lot of things that are said. I'm not saying that it's right. You know, this public shaming of Mr. Gomez tonight, Counselor Gomez tonight. It's really, really too bad that we've, we've had to, to come to this. But at the same time, we are elected in our seats, just like you're elected in your seat. And we, we don't have to necessarily provide policy for people to behave themselves because we're individually elected officials, even though we make up the body of a council. And I learned that when I went to the county commissioners about something and they had no authority over another elected official. So, and that's too bad. But I do agree that that was disrespectful. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I'm just a car salesman and I go to work and I, I do, I do my job and I take the police department for granted. I take it for granted that they go out there and they protect the community. And whenever my business has a, a problem, you call the police and they come, they come take care of it. And then, you know, we're quick to criticize and quick to go, geez, you know, I wish, I wish they did a better job of this, a better job of that. But I cannot pretend to even have any idea what the police department, the first responders went, went through the last week. Just as a city counselor, hearing the news literally was shocking. And it was that, oh my God, what do we do now moment? That is just something that nobody should go through. And I know the whole community went through the exact same process. But boy, it certainly gives you perspective of the amount of commitment and the, the unwavering bravery of these first responders and especially the police department that wave into a gun battle. And I mean, it's just, I'm not even qualified to say what that feels like, but I have the utmost respect and, and I care and, and I share the community and this council sentiments that we're all praying for swift and total recoveries for everybody involved. And we have to remember, even the ones that weren't injured need care and love and somebody put their arm around because this is a big deal, a big deal. And I really, I really at this moment appreciate them more than I've ever appreciated them. So. With that being said, we're going to go to a review and approval of the agenda.
I'd like to have a chance to respond to some of this.
Counselor Gomez, we've had our public comment.
Obviously.
There's nothing to respond to.
She brought my name up five different times.
Everybody knows the collusion that's going on between this mayor and this counselor. Counselor Gomez, you're out of order and we need to go on to review and approval of the agenda. Page one. Page two. Page three.
Mr. President, I'd like to move M eight to the regular agenda.
Madam Clerk, you get that?
Yes. And Mr. President, we'd also like to remove N four from the agenda.
Do what?
Staff would like to remove N four from the agenda.
M?
N.
N. We remove N four? Page four. Page five. Is there an approval for the agenda?
Mr. President, I make a motion to amend the agenda moving, moving item M eight to the regular agenda and removing item N four and approve the agenda as amended.
Sir, a second. Counselor Flores, any questions? Call for the vote. Passes seven zero. We now go to a reading and approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, I make a motion to dispense with the reading and approve the minutes of the regular meeting dated March 10th, 2025 as distributed.
Sir, a second. Counselor Flores, any questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, we now move to public hearings. Item J one.
Item J one, petition for annexation area commonly known as the first addition of Villabella Annexation, described as 8.018 acres of land generally located northeast of the intersection of Troy Avenue and Rollins Boulevard. This public hearing is held for the purpose of determining and finding whether or not the area proposed for annexation meets the applicable requirements for the Colorado Revised Statutes 31-12-104 and 105, references agenda item M four resolutions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Publicity Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Scott Hobson, Acting Director of Planning and Community Development for the city. The purpose of the hearing this evening is to receive testimony for certain findings and determinations for the area commonly known as the first addition to Villabella Annexation, to determine if the area proposed for annexation meets applicable requirements of the Colorado Revised Statutes 3112104 and 105. The first addition to Villabella Annexation is located northeast of the intersection of Troy Avenue and Rollins Boulevard. The petitioners are requesting to annex 8.018 acres into the city for a potential mixture of land uses that complies with the future land use designations within the Pueblo Regional Comprehensivity Plan adopted in 2022 as amended. The city attorney has specific questions addressing Colorado Revised Statutes for the proposed annexation.
So Mr. Hobson, did you receive a petition for annexation for this filing?
Yes.
And do the owners of the property who have signed the annexation petition comprise at least 50% of the landowners in the area and owning more than 50% of the area, which precludes the requirement for an annexation election?
Yes, the petitioners own 100% of the property proposed to be annexed.
And have the owners of the property who have signed the annexation petition consented to the annexation of the property into the city of Pueblo?
Yes.
Is not less than one-sixth of the perimeter of the area proposed to be annexed contiguous with the existing boundaries of the city of Pueblo?
Yes, in fact, this property is actually surrounded almost exclusively by areas that have been previously annexed into the city.
Has the annexation plat proposed been prepared by a licensed surveyor within the state of Colorado, verifying the property comprised, complies with section 3112104 of the Colorado Municipal Annexation Act?
Yes, an annexation plat has been prepared and provided to the city for this annexation. I'd like to enter the plat as exhibit A to this hearing.
Does a community of interest exist between the area proposed to be annexed in the city of Pueblo and that said area is urban or will be urbanized in the near future and that said area is integrated with or is capable of being integrated with the city of Pueblo?
Yes, as I stated before, this area is surrounded by other areas that have previously been annexed into the city of Pueblo.
Has an annexation petition or petition for annexation election pursuant to CRS 3112107 been initiated within another municipality involving all or a portion of this property?
No, this property is only adjacent to, tied to the city of Pueblo.
Will the annexation of this property result in the detachment of the area from any school district and the attachment of the same to another school district?
No.
Does any portion of the property proposed to be annexed extend the municipal boundary of the city of Pueblo more than three miles?
No, all of this area is within the adopted three-mile annexation plan for the city of Pueblo.
Based upon those responses.
Staff requests that city council find the following facts by its approval of resolution M four on the consent agenda. Number one, section 30 of Article two of the state constitution and CRS sections 3112104 and 3112105 have been met. Number two, that an annexation election under CRS 3112107 two is not required. And three, that no additional terms or conditions other than those set forth in the petition for annexation in the annexation agreement are to be imposed.
And that includes our testimony, if there's any other testimony to be.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this annexation? Did I need to be sworn in?
Yes. Do you can swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Publicity Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name and address in the microphone.
Jason Allwine, Matrix Design Group, 2435 Research Parkway, Suite 300, Colorado Springs, Colorado. Here on behalf of the owner representing the, the owner and land developer. As Scott mentioned, this parcel is entirely surrounded by city of Pueblo land. In fact, it's surrounded by the Villabella, which one is a Villabella planned unit development out near the university. So we're just bringing in some of these surrounded parcels into this overall development. Nothing further ad. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this annexation? Come on down.
Please raise your right hand. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you shall give before the Publicity Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to say, except that I am in favor of this and all the other annexations that are, that are planned because it will, it helps our, our growth here in, in Pueblo. And I, that's all I got to say. All right. I'm in favor.
Thank you for that testimony. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak in favor of this annexation? Saying none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this annexation? Saying that there's no other testimony, the hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, we now move to J two.
Item J two, petition for annexation area commonly known as the second addition to the Villabella Annexation, described as 10.094 acres of land generally located northeast of the intersection of Troy Avenue and Rollins Boulevard. This public hearing is held for the purposes of determining and finding whether or not the area proposed for annexation meets the applicable requirements of the Colorado Revised Statutes 31-12-104 and 105, references agenda item M five resolutions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, Mr. President. The purpose of this hearing is to receive testimony on certain findings and determinations for the area that's commonly known as second addition to Villabella Annexation, determine if the area proposed for annexation meets the applicable requirements of Colorado Revised Statutes 3112104 and 105. Second addition to Villabella Annexation is located northeast of Villabella aisle two and west of the proposed Bacolod Mesa Road, roadway. Petitioners are requesting to annex 10.094 acres into the city for a potential mixed, mixture of land uses that complies with the future land use designations within the Pueblo Regional Comprehensivity Plan adopted 2022 as amended. The city attorney has specific questions addressing CRS statutes for this proposed annexation. And I might add that these three annexations that we're doing the hearings on this evening, they do not have contiguity with themselves, meaning the boundaries don't touch each other. And so that's why these are all being handled as independent annexations.
Did you receive a petition for annexation for this filing?
Yes.
Do the owners of the property who have signed the annexation petition comprise at least 50% of the landowners in the area, only more than 50% of the area, which precludes the requirement for an annexation election?
Yes, the petition signed by 100% of the ownership.
Have the owners of the property who have signed the annexation petition consented to the annexation of the property into the city of Pueblo?
Yes.
If not less than one, is not less than one-sixth of the perimeter of the area proposed to be annexed contiguous with the existing boundaries of the city of Pueblo?
Yes, this is another one of the properties that is really an enclave that's surrounded by other properties that have been annexed into the city.
Has the annexation plat of the proposed area been prepared by a licensed surveyor within the state of Colorado, verifying the property complies with section 3112104 of the Colorado Municipal Annexation Act?
Yes, and I have exhibit A, which includes the annexation plat for the second addition to the Villabella Annexation.
Does a community of interest exist between the area proposed to be annexed in the city of Pueblo and that said area is urban or will be urbanized in the near future and that said area is integrated with or is capable of being integrated with the city of Pueblo?
Yes, the property is adjacent to the existing Villabella development, which was annexed. Yes, the property is adjacent to the existing Villabella development, which was annexed um previously into the city.
Has an annexation petition or petition for annexation election been initiated within any other municipality involving all or a portion of this property?
No.
Will the annexation of this property result in the detachment of the area from any school district or the attachment of the same to another school district?
No.
Does any portion of the property proposed to be annexed extend the municipal boundary of the city of Pueblo more than three miles?
No, the entire area is within the adopted three mile annexation plan for the city of Pueblo.
And I'd just like the the record to reflect that the uh city has proposed or handed exhibit A to the clerk. And also ask that council take notice of the prior testimony in favor of the annexations in this hearing as well. And then um I would ask council to uh accept the uh the annexation by its approval of resolution M five on the consent agenda. Uh, and in that resolution, they're setting forth facts that find that it uh meets the requirements of section thirty one, twelve, one oh four and one oh five. And that the annexation election uh is not required. And that there's no additional terms or conditions to be set forth in the petition for annexation. And that's all the testimony that we have.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this annexation?
Reminder, you remain sworn.
Jason Allwine, Matrix Design Group, uh twenty-four thirty-five Research Parkway, Suite um three hundred, Colorado Springs, Colorado, uh here representing the owner and developer. Uh, nothing further ad. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this annexation?
You remain sworn, Mr. Freeman.
Uh, Ted Freeman, basically, I'm going to say the same thing. I'm in favor of of these annexations. Because it's going to help us, you know, grow in Pueblo here. And I think it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you for that testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this annexation? Saying none, is there anyone wishing to speak against this annexation? Saying there's no other testimony, this hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, J three.
Item J three petition for annexation area commonly known as third addition to Villabella annexation described as seventy-nine point six three acres of land generally located northeast of the intersection of Troy Avenue and Rawlings Boulevard. Adjacent to the walking stick vistas development. This public hearing is held for the purpose of determining and finding whether or not the area proposed for annexation meets the applicable conditions record requirements of the Colorado revised statutes thirty one dash twelve dash one oh four and one oh five. Reference agenda item M six resolutions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report.
Uh, just to add what the clerk uh just recited, uh, this is the third annexation to the Villabella. Uh, annexation, it is generally located northeast of the intersection of Troy Avenue and Rawlings Boulevard. And adjacent to the walking stick this development. Petitioners requesting to annex seventy-nine point six three seven acres into the city. For a potential mixture of land uses that complies with the future land use designations within the Pueblo Regional Comprehensy Plan as adopted in two thousand and twenty-two as amended.
And did you receive a petition for annexation for this filing?
Yes.
Do the owners of the property who have signed the annexation petition comprise at least fifty percent of the landowners in the area, owning more than fifty percent of the area which precludes the requirement for an annexation election?
Yes, the owners own one hundred percent of the property.
Have the owners of the property who have signed the annexation petition consented to the annexation of the property into the city of Pueblo?
Yes.
Is not less than one-sixth of the perimeter of the area proposed to be annexed contiguous with the existing boundaries of the city of Pueblo?
Yes.
Has the annexation plat of the proposed uh annexation area been prepared by a licensed surveyor within the state of Colorado verifying that the property complies? With the Colorado Municipal Annexation Act?
Yes, an annexation plant has been submitted uh to the city uh by a licensed surveyor within the state of Colorado. And I will enter that as exhibit A to this hearing.
Just been provided to the city clerk. Does the community of does a community of interest exist between the area proposed to be annexed in the city of Pueblo? And that said area is urban or will be urbanized in the near near future? And that said area is integrated with or capable of being integrated with the city of Pueblo?
Yes, the property that's proposed to be annexed is uh located between the Villabella development and walking stick. Uh, planned unit development uh and is able to be integrated integrated into the city.
Has an annexation petition or petition for annexation election been initiated within another municipality involving all or portion of this property?
No.
Will the annexation of this property result in the detachment of the area from any school district or the attachment of the same to another school district?
No.
Does any portion of the property proposed to be annexed extend the municipal boundary of the city of Pueblo more than three miles?
No, the all of this property is located within the adopted three mile annexation plan for the city of Pueblo.
Okay. And the city would ask that you take notice of the prior testimony that is uh. Also uh involving these properties in the previous two hearings. And that's all the testimony they have for this the city at this time.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this annexation?
Jason Allwine, Matrix Design Group, twenty-four thirty-five Research Parkway, Suite three hundred, Colorado Springs, Colorado, uh representing the owner and developer. Uh, this parcel is a little little different location than the previous two, but does provide biological connection between walking stick and the overall Villabella P U D. Uh, in the future, this will allow for uh better improved connections, both roadway and utilities as uh the Villabella grows or develops northward up to, I believe it's the North Vista Highlands. Uh, nothing further ad and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this annexation?
Yeah, I get my exercise this way. Yeah, I'm in favor of of this uh, uh, okay, just for the same reason I stated before. Uh, the annexation into the city will help may improve our growth. Okay, and I thank you.
Thank you for that testimony. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this annexation? Saying none, is there anyone wishing to speak against this annexation? Saying there's no further testimony, this hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, we move to the consent agenda. There are no communications. We move to item M one and resolutions.
Item M one, a resolution authorizing the transfer of budget and appropriated funds in the amount of two hundred fifty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars from project count H U A N zero one street resurfacing to project account H U A N zero four. Vehicles and equipment, public works for the purpose of acquiring a new street sweeper for the streets division of the public works department. Item M two, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a revocable print R E V twenty-five four to Steel City Music Showcase for the use of the alley between South Victoria and South Union Avenue. Commonly referred to as Neon Alley, starting from the edge of East B Street right of way and continuing northeasterly along the alley center line at a distance of one hundred twenty-five feet, as well as sitting on property designated as parcels number zero five dash three six four dash zero eight dash zero zero two. And zero five dash three six four dash zero eight dash zero zero three to host a music festival event. Item M three, a resolution establishing an approved list of contractors to perform emergency si- storm sewer point repairs during calendar years twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-seven and authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. Item M four, a resolution approving and adopting findings and determinations concerning the proposed annexation of the area commonly known as the first addition to the Villabella annexation. Described as eight point zero one eight acres of land located generally located northeast of the intersection of Troy Avenue and Rawlings Boulevard. Item M five, a resolution approving and adopting findings and determinations concerning the proposed annexation of the area commonly known as the second addition to Villabella annexation. Described as ten point zero nine four acres of land generally located northeast of the intersection of Troy Avenue and Rawlings Boulevard. Item M six, a resolution approving and adopting findings and determination concerning the proposed annexation of the area commonly known as the third annexed addition to the Villabella annexation. Described as seventy-nine point six three nine acres of land generally located northeast of the intersection of Troy Avenue and Rawlings Boulevard and adjacent to the walking stick vista development. Item M seven, a resolution amending resolution number fifteen six zero nine that subsequently amended by resolutions fifteen six forty-one, fifteen six fifty-one, and fifteen seven thirty-two. To reallocate funds and to update the finance project account numbers assigned for projects associated with fire station six, eight, and eleven. Item M nine, a resolution approving amendment number one to the agreement for professional architectural services between the city of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation. And Deman Design Services, Inc., a registered Colorado corporation, authorizing the purchasing agent to execute same. Item M nine first, uh, excuse me, N ordinances first presentation. Item N one, an ordinance approving an appropriation agreement in the amount of seven hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars to provide services as outlined in intergovernmental agreement between the. Pueblo Department of Public Health and Environment and the city of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, authorizing the matter to execute same. Item M two, N two, an ordinance vacating a two hundred square foot portion of the Aubriando Avenue right of way. Item N three, an ordinance approving an amendment to a subperceivable agreement to the city of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation, and Pueblo School District sixty, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, and authorizing the matter to execute same. Item N five, an ordinance creating a new section fourteen of chapter one of title fifteen of the Pueblo Municipal Code. Related to pedestrian safety and access to sidewalks and public rights support in the downtown business area of the city. Item N six, an ordinance transferring four hundred sixty-four thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy cents from the capital improvement fund to the housing rehab fund. By the way, a fifty thousand dollars from project C I zero one thirty-nine in-stream water rights. Ten thousand five hundred sixty dollars and eighty-eight cents from project C I nineteen ten, Pueblo Rescue Mission Homeless Shelter. Three thousand sixty-six dollars and sixty-two cents from project C I two zero zero four strategic crouching plan. A hundred and sixty-five thousand from project C I twenty-three oh two record management system fire. Sixty thousand dollars from project C I twenty-four oh two consolidated consolidated plan. Thirty-eight thousand from project C I twenty-four oh three development study. Forty thousand from project H S two five zero two, section three employment guide. And ninety-eight thousand two hundred twenty dollars and twenty cents from project C I twenty-four oh six Jan twenty twenty-four. Merrow runoff election to project H S two four eight zero homeless shelter operations.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we have an approval of the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move to approve all resolutions set forth in the consent agenda passed the ordinances of the consent agenda setting the public hearings for April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five and order the ordinances to be published by title.
Is there a second? Counselor Martinez. Any questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, we now move to the regular agenda, item M eight.
Item M eight, a resolution enacting a policy prohibiting the presence of signs within the city council chambers during meetings of the city council.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, members of council, madam mayor, this is a. Resolution which establishes a policy restricting the use of signs or posters within council chambers as requested by city council. I'd be happy to answer any questions that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor uh Latino, questions? No questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes five to two. Madam Clerk, resolutions, item Q one.
Item Q one, a resolution encouraging a yes vote on ballot item two A of the May sixth, twenty twenty-five special election to terminate the city's franchise agreement with Black Hills Colorado Electric LLC, D B A Black Hills Energy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, Mr. President, members of council, madam mayor, this is a resolution which is authorized by the Fair Campaign Practices Act for the statutes of Colorado. Which allows city council to take a formal position urging a yes vote on the upcoming ballot item two A at the May sixth, twenty twenty-five special election. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. Uh, Elvis Martinez, you signed up?
Well, it's obvious, so I spoke on this in the past too, and it's obvious how I'm going to vote, so I wouldn't, I'm, I would urge them to vote no, because. I don't see how the city could acquire all the assets that could equal a half a billion dollars. Seven hundred fifty million, whatever that price would be in how I spoke last time. That if, if the city takes over and God forbid something like California happen here, who gets sued? That's a billion dollar question. And also for this, you guys do still have the power to counsel this election. And save the taxpayers at least a hundred thousand dollars, because our it's been put out. It could cost a hundred thousand dollars or more. It's not set in stone on the exact dollar amount as of right now, as I'm speaking, how much it'll cost. And we always talk about the constituency, the taxpayers' money. This election deals with the taxpayers' money. And how you guys have spoken in the past on this, you guys already have your thoughts and everything set in stone, so. Also, when we had this in twenty twenty, we had a low voter turnout. About thirty percent or or so people turned out to vote that were registered voters then. Who knows? I hope sixty percent turn out, seventy, eighty percent. I I hope that they do. No, I I would really love a hundred percent of the registered voters to vote in this. Now, now that would be historic, but I know I'm not going to get the hundred percent. So I I would be happy with at least fifty percent of the registered voters, because that's at least half of the constituency that you guys serve to vote on this hot topic issue. And I want to thank the mayor and Mister and and Mister Ayla for holding these town halls, and I plan to attend one or two. And I apologize that I didn't attend the last one because I was at work. So thank you, Mr. President and and Madam Mayor for holding them.
Thank you. Ken Dante, you signed up?
I would ask the uh the folks of Pueblo, how many people like Black Hills? How many people think that Black Hills is doing us a good job? They just raised our rates as they complain about. Uh, the city, you know, taking over and raising the rates. They just did it, and they'll continue to do that at every opportunity. I think the study that is being done is going to show that if we take over the entire territory of Black Hills, that's going to be the easiest approach. I would hope that would be the the likely approach. Um, we could take, we could take a a lot of money that just goes flows to South Dakota. I mean, their CEO. Makes, I believe, about five, maybe over five uh million dollars a year. Um, if we, if we get one of our existing co-ops or municipal utilities to help us run this thing. That means the city won't have to run it. The city won't have to finance it, but another utility could could do it for us. Um, and there's a, there's a great one that's that's near us that sits that that sits right below Black Hills. That could do a a great job, and their people love them. Um, and I'm talking about San Isabel, not that San Isabel would do this, but uh um, there's, there's opportunities like that, so. Uh, I I don't think there's a lot of risk in this. It's just a lot of benefit for for us to finally get out from under this economic suppressor. Um, this utility that charges the highest rates in the state. Why wouldn't we want to change? I mean, it it uh, if if we want to free us and get us uh to uh to a better economic situation. This is probably the biggest leverage we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra Scher. Ted Freeman. You signed up for this? Ted Freeman. They wore you out, uh.
Well, the resolution says encouraging a yes vote. Yes, on what? Number one, the feasibility study that uh you guys have of paying for with G D S uh is not completed. So, you know, and right now you have absolutely no idea. Of what you would be buying. Or what you would be creating as far as, you know, I municipality. Or are you any kind of you? or are you, any kind of utility, whether it's a co-op or otherwise. So this resolution isn't, does it not make sense? There's no facts to it. If there's no facts to it, it just don't make sense. So I would say, okay, that, uh, you need to say no on Q one with, unless you have a feasibility study that I don't know about, and I thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Counselor Latino, questions? Counselor Gomez?
Yeah, just for what it's worth, this company's proved to be a bully, and you know how I feel about bullies, but, um, the way I look at this thing and the way I've learned about it is that, um, from what I understand, okay, I don't pretend to be an expert on this, but they keep on, the, uh, Black Hills Energy folks are running commercials night and day, and I'm not here ready to defend the mayor, but what they're doing is stooping pretty low, and they're hiding behind a name called Pueblo Cares. You gotta be aware of that, and that is deceitful. So for what it's worth, I think we need to look at, what I've learned and tried to understand about this not being an expert, is that if we can get Black Hills Energy in a position to understand, we don't want them here, we don't, we force them to sell, maybe we'd be able to get four or five years' time to consider it after we take the offering. That's how I understand it, and that seems to be the most logical thing for me, because they keep on throwing this stuff out. First, it's four hundred million dollars to get the assets at the airport. Now it's a billion. The next thing you know, it's gonna be the moon. So these guys are deceitful, they got the fox in the hen house, and I think we've gotta just, to me, it's just a no-brainer. It's a yes for me on the vote. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Boston?
Thank you, Mr. President. If somebody has the numbers, um, potentially from staff, oh, what did they say that the estimated increase was gonna be on the bill at eighteen percent? Do you remember what the average person was gonna? Per month?
I think it's around twenty dollars.
So twenty dollars a month at eighteen percent. So now they're doing seven, about seven percent, so, you know, that's what, probably about seven bucks, eight bucks a month, we'll call it. And then they want to run propaganda talking about the grocery tax. So three percent on groceries at a hundred dollars per month, you're gonna be paying less than the grocery tax, and they're just, they just started charging you, what was it, Saturday for their recent rate increase? But they want to try to bash the mayor for making more money when they're gonna be charging you more per month than the grocery tax would? Why would you like Black Hills? Why wouldn't you want them gone? Why wouldn't the city want to do what's in the best interest of the community to get rid of somebody that's trying to take all this money for you just to pad their own pockets? At least with the grocery tax, we'd be able to do something to help infrastructure for the city and better our community. That money that you're gonna pay to Black Hills ain't gonna go to nothing, besides padding people's pockets. So yeah, I think it's in the best interest of us, and it's our responsibility to invest a hundred thousand dollars in this election to see if we can save this community millions of dollars. So, uh, Ted Freeman does bring up a good point, that yeah, we may not have the feasibility study yet, but, uh, I have hope that just like the last one, this one will tell us better information that off-ramping will be in the best interest of this community. It'll save us money, and I think it's the right thing to do. Um, you know, my decision will be based on what the constituents think and what is best for this community, but personally, I think Black Hills is outrageous, and they do not do anything good for Pueblo, so that's my opinion on it.
Counselor Latino?
I agree with Counselor Boston, and, uh, you know, Mr. Freeman, I've seen you on TV with the ads, so, uh, uh, again, you know, you have to do what you have to do. But they're, I don't want to get fined. They're raping this community.
Counselor Flores?
Uh, I was wanting to ask, uh, whoever can answer this question, uh, when, when are we gonna see the consultant report? Do we know?
April seventh.
April seventh, and then I had asked a question, um, two meetings ago about, uh, the amount of money that we paid for the consultant report and the amount that's within the, the, the consultant report that indicates that we're gonna spend, I don't, I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand on education. And I had asked, uh, and I still need an answer to that question as to whether or not that portion can be considered a, a, a political contribution, which we can't do as a city. Uh, so I'm wondering how I get an answer to that question.
No, I, I apologize. I don't remember being asked that question, but I can say that that-
I've actually asked, uh, uh, Mrs. Sykes.
That's fine. No, that would not be considered part of this. That was, uh, I believe the contract was signed prior to the ballot language being approved, and it is for, it's not necessarily for, uh-
Political purposes.
Correct. Thank you very much. Yeah.
And that, that's your opinion?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Maestra?
You know, I, I just don't think we're looking very credible, the leadership in this community, because what we have said consistently is, we can't answer your questions because we don't have the feasibility study. But now, we don't, we're not asking you to decide yes or no, because we don't have the feasibility study. But now, we're asking you to say yes, or we're, we're agreeing that you should say yes, and we don't have the feasibility study. And I didn't ever think that, well, what possibly, well, the paper said today it could be a billion-dollar ac-acquisition, that we made these kinds of decisions based off emotional, um, decisions. Black Hills Energy is a bad guy. Black Hills Energy is, uh, raping the community, as Mr. Counselor Latino just said. Black Hills Energy is this, that, and the other. But we're gonna go ahead and we might be able to fix that for you citizens for about a billion dollars. And then to say, ask, say that, you know, and, and not only that, we don't trust you in voting either yes or no on this. We're gonna ask you to give us your vote to make that decision, and yet, um, I think it's pretty ob- it's pretty obvious that right now those decisions are based off of emotions of what a big bu- bad guy Black Hills Energy is, and believe you me, I'm not for higher rates. I moved here from, um, a state dominated by Pacific Gas and Electric, and when I moved here back thirty-five years ago, my rates were three times higher in this state in the different areas that I've lived in than it ever was in that state. But then again, California has more density, so they can spread out that, that rate. So I've had to suffer from high rates ever since I moved here, and Black Hills Energy was not the provider at that time. But I just think we just don't look very credible when we say, oh, here, we're from the government and we're here to help you. So, um, I think we should be fair, and we should not even put a resolution like this forward before we have the study. The study that should have probably been done a year ago, not at the last minute. And so I think that's what's fair, so I won't be voting for this tonight. I'm not gonna be part of this. Uh, it, it's, you want to talk about disrespectful? It's disrespectful to the community to take their vote. It's disrespectful to the community to, um, set them up, uh, play off their emotions of having to pay higher utilities when you have no idea what it's gonna take to go through the condemnation process and put the city and the taxpayers and the ratepayers and their dollars through this process. Because, oh, and then I wanted to ask, it says here on, on this, there are no financial implications. Well, when I went to the town hall the other day, um, there was a question, and I, you know, I should have kept the paper, how stupid of me. I should have kept the paper, because really what it said was, what's gonna happen after, if the voters say yes, what's the next step? Well, guess what? We have to buy another feasibility study. Because the one that we're getting here on April seventh isn't really gonna give us all the information to make that decision for condemnation. So I don't know how we can't, there are no financial implications to this. How are there no fina-financial implications to telling the people, oh, you need to vote yes on this because Black Hills Energy is a big, bad, bad person? There's a lot of things that need to be known, and the public needs to make that decision on their own. And if you all pulled the trigger at the last minute, bringing this to our attention at the last minute, we still need to be honest with the public in order to get this passed, and we already said, don't make any decisions until we get the feasibility study, but now you're asking us to make a decision. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counselor Gomez?
Well, my feasibility study is my, my bill, and I'm telling you, when I look at this stuff, and we have a company that's ten times smaller than XL that could swallow up in a bite, they have, they would, XL would increase their rate base, spreading the cost out even further. They have lower rates than right now. So I don't know what the big discussion is. We have a bully in the house. That's what we have. And we have them working constantly to change the minds of the people here with our own money, with our own dollars that we are paying for it. They're not, they have no risk in this thing. Then we hear about the four hundred thousand generation plan at the, at the airport, okay? It's now swelled to a billion. What are we doing? It's, they've been giving us hints all along. We had forty-eight percent of supposedly, forty-eight percent increase is high or higher than most of the front-range cities already. Nobody's talking about decreasing that. Now they want another eighteen percent on top of that? What more do you need? Feasibility, that's a feasibility study in my mind. Stop letting these guys, you got that, you got that fox in the house, and we gotta shut them out. Simple to me.
Anybody else? Counselor Ma, or Counselor Maestra, go ahead and finish your thought.
Yes, well, we paid three hundred thousand dollars for the experts to tell us, not for you, Counselor Gomez. And we don't have, we don't have the feasibility study yet. You have your opinion. Yes, that's right. Again, an opinion, and then we have promised the people that we are bringing them an educated study on what's going to take place, not a opinion, because you know what? Your bill's high now? Well, you don't know what it's gonna cost if it does cost us a billion dollars in the future to have to buy this. That's what the study says. There are no guarantees, and that's what the study is supposed to tell us, and they haven't told us that yet. So shame on us for trying to tell you it's the best idea when, guess what? We don't know. Why would we spend three hundred thousand dollars on a study if we just were all geniuses here on what's going to happen?
Because we're not geniuses.
Well-
Counselor Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just, you know, I guess, Counselor Maestra, to your point that we're voting on emotion, even if we look at the data around Black Hills rates across Colorado, the data says that Pueblo pays the highest in the whole state. That's, that's straight data. And the data also says that the PUC just added an additional seven percent on already the highest rates in the whole state. So it's, it's not necessarily just based on emotion. There is data and financial figures behind that, which shows that our constituency is paying the most out of every, all of their peers across the state.
Counselor Maestra?
Well, that's true. Again, I'm not saying that we don't pay the highest rates around the state, but what I'm saying is what's it going to cost us, and what are we going to have to go through in order to acquire the utility? It's not free. And it's, I've seen the condemnation process. I read about it in Boulder. It doesn't matter what, if it's alternative energy or renewable energy or rate hikes or whatever. It's about the process that costs tens of billions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars to get, even get to the courts to tell you yes or no. There are, oh, now we're gonna take on the other communities. Are they gonna pay to go through the condemnation process? Or are we gonna leave them behind and leave them to s- maybe, um, you know, have to take on higher rates because we've taken ourselves out of the equation? There's a lot of things to this, and those haven't even been addressed, and we're gonna say yes to tell the people to say yes. It, 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 that's just ridiculous. This started late in the game. It took away an educated decision from the people and left it in seven people's hands. And four of us may not even be here after this next election. You never know. Four of us may not even be here after this next election, but we're gonna go ahead and we're going to, uh, decide on your future on whether you're gonna spend a billion dollars or not. It's ridiculous. And that's, I, I'll, and I'll say that till the day I die. This whole thing has been a sham to the people of this community.
And that's the beautiful thing of an election, isn't it? Is that you, you get, you have differing opinions on, on how things are going to happen.
Can I ask a question?
I, I think it's very interesting that, uh, uh, whenever we run for office or anything, we literally ask people to vote for us. And we say that there's a better alternative, and that's us, and if you don't like us, vote for the other person. I totally respect what Counselor Maestra is saying. I think that, uh, she makes some valid points. I think that there's also, uh, we have sat in front of council, we've gone to the town hall, started the town halls, and literally condemnation is not the only option. It's not the only thing that this, that this feasibility study will look at. There's lots of ways to skin a cat, and it's not just condemnation. But what happens is they know that that's the hot button. Black Hills knows that that's the hot button. When you're gonna spend a billion dollars and your taxes are gonna go up and all these crazy things are happening, they got our neighbors on TV writing checks. And it's just, it, it, it's just a scare tactic. I mean, there's other ways to, to obtain a utility rather than condemnation. I was involved, along with Counselor Flores, in the original feasibility study that was done. I believe the price tag in that feasibility study, now, now, now hear me out, was a billion dollars. It's that same billion dollars. The feasibility study showed if you paid a billion dollars for the utility, your rates would go down minimum of fifteen percent. But nobody wanted to listen to that. They just wanted to say, all they heard was on the news, billion dollars, billion dollars, your taxes are gonna go up, even though you don't spend your tax dollars on municipalization. So there's a lot of information out there that's just not correct. I agree with Counselor Maestra that, you know, it's hard to make a decision when you don't have the actual study in front of you, which you'll have on April seventh. This resolute, this resolution is simply, say, encouraging somebody to vote to get rid of Black Hills Energy. And everybody's gonna make their decision based on, by the time May sixth comes around, they will have gathered enough information to try and make an intelligent decision, if they choose to even read it, if they choose to even engage. I mean, if you have a town hall and thirty-five people show up, and there's a hundred and ten thousand people that live in the community, it's a little hard to get the right information out there. Uh, when you don't have a one and a half to two-million-dollar budget to be on TV every fifteen seconds saying that this is the worst deal you could ever do, it's hard to beat that. I think it's all gonna come down to the feasibility study. I think the community's intelligent, whether they have any desire to move forward with getting rid of Black Hills. Then, then they're gonna move forward with, uh, getting rid of Black Hills. Uh, I said the other night, I think it's a simple, i- i- it's a simple question. Do you, do you want to make, keep going down the road that we're going, or do you want to try something different? Do you want to try and make a difference in our community? If the community doesn't want to do that, then we need to move on, and we need to quit griping about our high rates and no economic development and, and all this craziness. But if we think that there's a way, why wouldn't we take it? If, if, if you think there's a chance, why wouldn't you take it? Why would you be so scared? Why would you be so scared that, and listening to the company who literally has millions and millions and maybe a billion dollar cash cow? They don't wanna get rid of that and they'll do anything. Including putting our neighbors on TV signing checks. It's just not right. And, and all we're asking for, all we're at, all this resolution says is we encourage the community to support this effort. Counselor Boston?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, uh, I know there's a motion on the table. But if we wanted to make a motion to postpone it, do we have to vote on this first and then?
Motion takes precedence over this. If you make, if you make a motion to amend, we would vote on the amendment before this.
So, uh, I know personally, like I, I am, you know, contingent on the feasibility study myself. I'm not a fan of Black Hills. I'll make that known. Everybody knows that. But, uh, this does, you know, maybe, uh, there are some valid points that have been brought to our attention. Maybe a motion to postpone this until April 14th, after we get the feasibility study would make people feel a little better.
Well, you, you can't say maybe. Do you want a motion or not?
Just throwing it out there, if that would make more people comfortable, they could do that.
You need to make the motion.
I'm not saying I want to. Throwing the information out there.
Well, I think, uh, we didn't take on Bob's Rules of Order. So we would just have to vote no, and then they could bring it up again after the feasibility study. Because.
We don't, um, we don't go by Bob's.
I know. We, well, Robert's Rules of Order, there's a motion on the table, correct?
There's not a motion. He didn't make a motion. He says, if maybe I made a motion. That's not a motion.
But don't we have a motion to approve or, or not?
Yes, but you can make a motion to amend or to postpone. And that takes precedence. And we would have to vote on that as soon as the motion is made. If it gets a second. So if anybody wants to make that motion, make that motion and let's get it out of the way.
I have another thing I'd like to say.
Okay, let's go through everybody. Let everybody talk. Joe Latino?
I, I think what we need to do is we need to take into consideration what's going on in other places. I've shared with you what's happening in Cheyenne, Wyoming, and I've talked to you about Black Hills. And I've talked to you about, about two family members there that are recently widowed in their 80s. And I've talked with other people. It's a disaster, it's a disaster what they do to people. It's about money. All about money. Not about anything else. It's all about money. I want them gone.
Uh, Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, in reference to the resolution where it says a yes vote on this would terminate the city's franchise agreement.
That's not what, that's not what this resolution says. This resolution just encourages the community to vote yes.
Okay.
But it doesn't terminate.
But there's nothing in reference to the ordinance saying what we'd have to decide right away, correct? We'd have time.
This is just asking somebody to vote.
Okay. All right. Got it. Got you. Thank you.
And Counselor Maestri.
You know, um, we sit up here and we talk about the state, uh, the legislature says at the state Capitol, voting and making decisions for us down here. And that's basically what we're gonna be subjecting the taxpayers here and asking them to do that we take that vote and we make that vote for, that decision for you on whether we're gonna off-ramp or not. And so again, I think this thing has been, there's, there's a lack of credibility in this ask of the public. And, um, we promised a feasibility study and that seems to be changing from meeting to meeting, from week to week, from day to day. We, guess what? Until I read the agenda, I had no idea this resolution was coming forward. This wasn't a pre-discussion amongst council members. It was not asked because if they would have, if we've, would have had some time to think about it, I mean, we are doing a disservice. We've been asking people to wait. Don't make a decision. And we're not doing that now. And it, and, and an emotional thing and, and no offense, Counselor Latino, but your family members up in, it's whether we off-ramp or not, it's not gonna affect your family members in Wyoming, cause they're not in our district. And I'm not gonna make decisions based off of another community unless that community somehow affects what, what we're doing. And, um, I don't really want to, I mean, we, you know, you're telling us, uh, President Alif, that there's so many options other than condemnation. Well, we, guess what? None of us know that. The community doesn't know that, cause they haven't heard the feasibility study. So that's, that's where I'm at with it. I'm gonna stick to my guns on it because I'm not gonna do that to the people of this community. It's their money. It's their dollars. I'm not committing to spending a billion dollars on this takeover.
Counselor Flores.
Uh, I, I just had a couple of comments. One of them is that, uh, recently, uh, I asked the county assessor as to how much, if the city of Pueblo were to take over the utility, how much, uh, would be lost in, uh, lost revenue for 23 entities? And that includes Pueblo County and School District 70, which get almost eight point, no, it's, it's actually nine million dollars. So the county would lose nine million dollars. The city would lose 1.7 million. And then there's School District 60, there's Rural Fire Districts, there's Hanover, even our, our Bandera Improvement District, Thunder Village, that comes up to 12,963,000 dollars. That would be lost revenue if the city were to take over. So I'm hoping that that, that, uh, study that's being done takes this into consideration. And then think about this. If we decide, if the voters decide to give this council the right to, and, and if you're hearing right now, the majority here already have made up their mind. This means that the minute they decide to off-ramp, this revenue will be lost immediately. They're not gonna wait until it's done. All of this revenue would stop at the point that we decide to off-ramp. That happened in Boulder. It's happening right now in Canyon City. They're losing 500, half a million dollars every year, cause they off-ramped five years ago. So they've already lost two and a half in that small city.
That's literally not true, what you're stating.
Yeah.
It's.
You take the off-ramp, all you lose is the franchise fee to the city. They still pay their taxes. They're still our provider. That, see, this is the information, in my opinion, that gets everybody wound up and it's not true.
This is, this came from the county assessor and he, he actually told me, cause I had a phone conversation with him.
Trust him.
That the minute that we off-ramp, this, these entities will lose that amount.
Well, then he's mistaken and maybe he should come to a city council meeting and get involved in the conversation? Because then maybe he would know that that's simply not true.
Did, did the county affirm, uh, that they're, they're also wanting us to off-ramp?
I have no.
I, I know you guys had a meeting.
I, not you guys, but someone involved with them.
Whoever, whoever met with the county, that's my understanding.
They were waiting for the feasibility study was their final.
And then secondly, and, and maybe, maybe I'm wrong on this, but I'm certainly gonna, I'm certainly gonna follow up on this. But I have another question, and that is the fallacy that we can take the entire Colorado territory. I think that is something that's not feasible. We can take Pueblo, city of Pueblo, but, but we've been, we've had testimony today that we should go after the entire state in order to have a larger mass to lower our rates. I don't even, I don't know the answer to that question, but it certainly has to be looked into.
Counselor, uh, Gomez.
Well, you know, we wouldn't be sitting here. Black Hills Energy was a decent corporate partner to its ratepayers. What more do we need? 48% increases, 18% increases? Are, are you kidding me? I don't even have to be hill over the head anymore. Like I said, and again, I mean, I'm a simpleton on this thing, but when you got a company like XL, it's 10 times bigger. They can swallow up all these things they keep on threatening us with. A billion dollars here, 400, what a crock. I just think it's so obvious. Right now, the citizens that are calling me, and I'm not making this stuff up. They're calling and they're calling non-stop. Why are you guys even considering this anymore? So I, I don't know. It just seems to be pretty logical to me. They need to go.
Latino?
I get the same calls. Okay? Counselor Gomez, you and I have the two districts where the people, uh, struggle the most. And, uh, I think we better realize that.
In a.
They're a disaster, Black Hills.
In an effort to compromise, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to postpone this till April 14th.
Second.
Is there, we have a second from Counselor Boston. Any questions? Counselor Martinez.
I'd like to hear how, what staff's recommendation is about this motion. For example, does it impact anything?
It doesn't impact anything. It was just giving a, um, more of a timeline for people to know more about what the ballot issue is. We don't disagree with Counselor Maestri and what you're saying, that we don't have the feasibility study back yet. But what I would imagine that if the feasibility study came back and it said that it was gonna be too expensive, right? Cause we're only asking people to vote yes if it's deemed feasible. That council would then make a motion to rescind the ordinance. Uh, because at that time, it would not be deemed feasible. So it would be another way for the city council to get the information out, um, about voting no, why you have to vote no, that we didn't find it to be feasible. So this really just gave an additional, uh, time for people to be involved, to get the information that they need. Um, and it was something that we wanted to bring forward. So I don't see the harm in moving it till the 14th. But it was more of a timeline than anything.
Counselor Maestri.
Let's keep in mind that a lot of the questions up here this evening are not gonna be answered in that feasibility study. Otherwise, they wouldn't be having to provide us with another feasibility study of what that means after the citizens, if the citizens were to vote yes and give us the authority. There's another feasibility study that comes out after that.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the table.
I just want everybody to, to understand that we should be, it's too bad we can't take this off the table, that we've actually just been pushed all the way to the last minute and half of the information is given, been given to the public. The public needs to know.
And on April 14th, they will know. Any questions? Any other questions?
Mr. President, can I just clarify that the motion is to postpone to April 14th?
That's a Monday, right?
Yes.
Yes, April 14th. That will give us one week after our work session on the feasibility study. Which I'm sure will go into the wee hours of the morning.
Clarification, quick. So if we do postpone to, to go to the 14th, but if we say no, we don't wanna do that. What happens to Q1?
Then we vote on whether to approve it or not.
Yes.
Okay. So if we vote no, okay, got it.
Got it?
Got it.
So this is a vote to move it to the 14th. Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. It passes five to two. Madam Clerk, we now move to Q, Q2.
Item Q2, a resolution authorizing payment from the council contingencies account with 2025 general fund budget to BITS of Freedom Corp., DBA Bits of Freedom in the amount of $2,000 to sponsor the Kentucky Derby Party fundraiser on May 3rd, 2025 at Pueblo Diversified Industries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, sir. Again, this is a request for support of the Bits of Freedom Corp. Doing business as Bits of Freedom in the amount of $2,000 to sponsor the Kentucky Derby Party fundraiser on May 3rd, 2025 at Pueblo Diversified Industries. Um, this is a crucial fundraiser to support equine assisted therapy programs for children and individuals with disability. And there has been no previous council action on this in the past, and that concludes my report.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Counselor Flores, any questions? Counselor Boston?
I would just like to say I was the one that brought this forward, um, for the amount of $2,000. As he stated, it was, uh, for, uh, therapy programs for children and those with disabilities. I don't know if you guys have been to PDI, but they do really amazing work there. Um, I think Pueblo is known as one of the best locations ever for people with disabilities. I just think this is a really cool thing to support. And who doesn't love a good Kentucky Derby? As they said, I think it's the most entertaining 30 seconds in sports. So.
The what?
Most entertaining 30 seconds in sports.
It's actually two minutes.
Oh, two minutes. Whatever. There you go. All right. You know, you know more than me.
Counselor Maestri.
Um, I also brought this forward. We're tied. Yeah. So it bringing this forward and it is.
Support.
Yes, it's dual support. And, um, yes, Pueblo Diversified, um, Industries does wonderful things with the disabled, uh, members in our community. Not just the youth, but they also have, um, adolescent and adults. And so, um, they've offered wonderful services and they do a great program, run a great program there. And I'm, I'm very proud to have a, a program like that in our community to serve that, that community. Thank you.
Counselor Gomez.
Oh my God, here he goes again. I'm gonna, I, I love children. Let's get that out there. I have a special child at home. I sat on the board for the, uh, in the, uh, Diversified Industries, sat on the board. All I'm asking is a simple question without getting slaughtered here, is can we, have we ever figured out what is the contingency money we're gonna give it out? Wasn't, I thought we had said, I think it was 1,500 once, I mean, 1,500 at one time, then it was a thousand. Where are we at with, with these contingencies? I'm just, I'm pretty hawkish on some of this stuff.
That did not pass.
I believe.
Okay. So we're, so we, we're, anybody can come in for 2,000, 5,000, one, whatever. Correct?
Correct.
That's what I wanted to click. Thank you.
Counselor, uh, Boston.
Wonderful clarification. I think the way it works is they will send something to Alyssa. Alyssa will forward it to us. They will have different sponsorship levels. The council can bring it to the request or at our request to the council to vote on for what amount. So I believe there was the Chilifest balloon thing we did last year for a large amount. Um, you know, but it's at council's discretion on what amount and who wants to bring it forward, if at all.
Any other comments? Call for the vote. Passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, Q3.
Item Q3, a resolution authorizing payment from the council contingencies account with 2025 general fund budget to the Arch of Pueblo in the amount of $1,000 to sponsor a table at the Golden Tortilla event on Friday, May 2nd, 2025 at the Pueblo Convention Center.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, sir. This is a request that was brought forth by Counselor Martinez. My apologies, my apologies for not mentioning that on the last one who brought it forward. But this is a request for support of Arch of Pueblo in the amount of 1,000 to sponsor a table at the Golden Tortilla event on Friday, May 2nd. The Pueblo Convention Center, um, council sponsored this event in 2020 with 1,000 and in 2024 with 400. And the Golden Tortilla aims to raise approximately $25,000 for their Archangel Fund, which is the lifeline for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston made the motion. Counselor Flores made the second. Are there any questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, Q4.
Item Q4, resolution authorizing payment from the council contingencies account with 2025 general fund budget to the Junior League of Pueblo in the amount of $1,500 to sponsor the Tora Truck Event on Saturday, April 12th, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM in the Carnival Lot at the Colorado State Fairgrounds.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a staff report?
Yes, sir. Again, this is a request brought forth by Counselor Maestri and Counselor Martinez um, for support of the Junior League of Pueblo in the amount of $1,500 to sponsor the Tora Truck Event on Saturday, April 12th, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Carnival Lot, the Colorado State Fairgrounds. There's no previous council action on this. And it looks like it's going to be fire trucks, police cars, construction trucks, tractors and more to fundraise, uh, to support community programs while also being a community impact event. And that concludes my report.
I also brought that forward. No, I'm joking, joking. Elvis Martinez, you signed up to speak on this?
I didn't bring it forward. Okay. So I looked at all the attachments like I do every time that there's these issues coming up. And I would say that this right here for the $1,500 and with the different levels, sponsorships that they have, whatever, if you. this right here for the fifteen hundred dollars and with the different levels, sponsorships that they have, whatever, if you wanna call them levels or tiers. The five hundred dollar tier or level has the same exact items that this fifteen hundred dollar tier slash level has. It's just a bulldozer and a front loader or whatever it is right there. Plus, it states on the attachments that it's five dollars per person when they enter and or twenty dollars for a truckload, carload, vanload of five people for twenty dollars. So it's buy four, get one free. And at least a thousand people are estimated to attend. So we could just do that math. So these people are gonna make a decent amount for this nonprofit. But the thing is, you guys could amend this and say five hundred dollars because we're getting the same exact sponsorship out of this according to the attachments. And that saves us a thousand dollars that we could probably put to the next one because they're only getting seven hundred and fifty. And that's a good uh one on the the next one. So you guys might amend it, you guys might approve this. You guys might vote it down. So I'm not in your minds and I don't know what all of you guys are thinking in those beautiful brains of yours. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman.
I'm getting lots of exercise tonight. But you know, the question I have, and I have, basically I have the same thing that what he's saying with reference to how this whole situation is gonna be operated, you know, with reference to a a cost to get in. And uh and be, and if you, with the food trucks and things of that nature, I mean, that's pretty expensive stuff. You know, so I don't, I don't know what they're kind of attendance they're expecting. But if there's any number, that that's gonna be up many, many, many thousands of dollars. And so I'm not sure that why we need to really put in the fifteen hundred dollars. As a sponsor type of thing. And uh whether or not they're getting other sponsors also. So that's a question, okay? I thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Flores. I have a, I have a question. Doesn't Junior League during Christmas partner with the police department? Don't they take all their kids to Walmart and stuff and they go shopping?
Uh, so the
But doesn't Junior League do that?
Pueblo um runs a, an event that uh does do first responders. And it's an event that um has been free to the community in the past, but it specifically targets um foster children. And so foster children uh come to that event, are given all the um supplies and they they have books. They have crafts um packets that they do with the first responders. Um, they they do, that that's part of the work that they do. They are nonprofit. None of their board gets any money. Um, all the money goes back to serving the children. And um they do ha- I I'm, I'm not familiar with this event. It used to be a touch a truck event. They haven't had it for several years. Um, I don't know for the Tourer Truck Event, in the past, they also allowed um foster children to come free to other events while allowing those who could pay to pay. Um, and they've worked with various organizations like Crossroads in the past to allow children that might not otherwise have this experience to come to these types of events for free. I do not know if that is the case um with this one, but that is information that I have from the past.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Latino.
I was gonna say that uh the Eagles Lodge number ninety on the south side on Prairie there take hundreds of kids to shop every Christmas. So they they're they're doing that that good deed too.
Counselor Boston.
I was just gonna say, um, you know, it's not necessarily always the, what the sponsorship gets us that I would say that people bring this for and the amounts they bring it for. Sometimes it's uh what the money's gonna go towards more so than what the sponsorship receives. So I would say like, for instance, why I chose two thousand over a thousand for the previous one was just because what it's going towards more so than what the sponsorship package was gonna receive.
Counselor Maestri.
Yeah, the the whole event is based on how much money they can fundraise to better serve um their their goals or their mission. It's not about just covering the expenses of the event.
Counselor Flores.
I just wanted to, I know a little bit about Junior League and that they they're, they're one of the oldest nonprofits in the community. They used to run the bargain box right next to the um, the Fourth Street uh Bridge. And they're so, I mean, their goal originally was to help children with clothing and with backpacks during the start of all the school years. And uh it really uh, and and they ran the bargain box for a while. I don't, I don't know whether or not they still do that. But uh, you know, I certainly would uh support this.
Anybody else? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, Q five.
Item Q five, resolution authorizing payment from the council contingencies account with twenty twenty five general fund budget to the Pueblo Child Advocacy Advocacy.
Advocacy.
Thank you. Center in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars to sponsor the National Child Abuse Prevention Month Campaign during the month of April, twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, sir. Again, this is a request brought forth by Counselor Martinez for support of the Pueblo Child Advocacy Center in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars to sponsor the National Child Abuse Prevention Month Campaign during the month of April, twenty twenty five. In the past, council has sponsored this campaign in twenty twenty three for one thousand dollars, and that concludes my report.
Thank you for that report. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Latino, questions? Uh, Counselor Gomez.
I'd like to look at amending this to raising it to a thousand dollars simply because the last four, three folks got two thousand, one thousand, fifteen hundred. They're doing it for one day event. These guys are doing it for a full month. Uh, maybe it's me, but if we're gonna be generous, let's be fair.
So are you making a motion?
Yes.
A second.
So we have a motion on the table to amend this to fifteen hundred dollars?
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars?
That would match with
And we have a second from uh Counselor Maestri. Any questions? So the vote is for one thousand dollars. We'll call for the vote. Passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, ordinance's final presentation, item R one.
Item R one, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract to buy and sell real estate by in between the City of Pueblo, Colorado Municipal Corporation. Erica Almienda Trujillo for the sale of property described as one oh one West River Walk Place. Units one A and one B within the City of Pueblo. Introduced March tenth, twenty twenty five by Counselor Brett Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Uh, this is an ordinance that would approve the contract to buy and sell or actually sell the first floor of the Riverwalk Building. Uh, the purchase price is one point two million dollars with a three hundred thousand dollar concession uh to go back to the purchaser. And um that concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Saying none, the hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Flores, questions? Counselor Gomez.
Were we um kind of went up breaking anything in reference to conversations we've had, but we're completely satisfied with the vetting of this this particular proposal? I'm I'm not, I wasn't sure I was there, but I'm just asking.
Uh, Counselor Maestri.
I had something different I was gonna say. Um, I, please tell us the appraised value.
The appraised value is one point two.
As it sits.
As it sits.
Okay, so I just uh won't be voting for this tonight. I wanted the community to know. Um, because with three hundred thousand dollar concession, it's going to go down to nine hundred thousand dollars. And with all the things that are going on in this community right now, as far as purchasing, buying and selling and so forth. I'm, I'm not gonna put my name on a asset of the cities that's going to basically sell for less than the appraised value. Um, you know, we just are talking about purchasing the upper part of that. We haven't even given it an opportunity. I know it's been sitting vacant for a long time, but we haven't even moved into our purchase part of it. We haven't given it an opportunity to see what maybe our needs are. And um I just want to let people know why I'm not voting for it. Thank you.
Perfect. Counselor Boston.
Mr. President, prior to this, um, as far as I remember, there wasn't much interest in the, it's basically just walls and cement floors, right?
The space is just raw space, walls and cement floors, yes.
So uh we we were, we haven't had anybody build out there, haven't had much interest to build out there. Anybody that's kinda wanted to build out there has kinda fallen through. This is a pretty serious client. Um, they're gonna put in a pretty good equitable practice by the sounds of it. And uh I know it may seem like it's gone below, but at least, you know, we're developing the space. We're getting something else down there that should be a benefit to the river. Uh, seems like it's a pretty good deal to me.
Counselor Flores.
Um, I think it's a hell of a good deal um for a lot of reasons. Uh, how old is that building? Do you remember?
It was completed, I believe, in two thousand and eight. That's when the building was completed.
So we're talking seventeen years. That that lower level was even vacant when P B R was there. They may have had boxes down there, I don't know. But that that building uh has been sitting there for seventeen years. And uh this is the first time that we had a serious buyer who also had their financing um documents in place, ready to go. And so this is the first legitimate offer we've ever had. And I I think uh nine hundred thousand is more than fair, especially when you're talking about a shell of a building. So I'll I'll be voting for it.
Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this. In reference to that location on the bottom floor. And we have three floors above that. At a, if I've got the number correct, thirty one thousand square feet above that? Is that correct? Does anybody know?
That that is approximately correct. I believe the square footage for the top for first, top three floors is somewhere around thirty three thousand square feet. Um, roughly.
And and we're trying to utilize that for staff, correct?
And that that will be utilized for staff, yes.
So the the gen- the revenue generation that is gone, up to above that, correct?
Correct. So it it would be city property, so city would not be
I understand. I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to figure out if we're hunting for money. And we've got thirty one thousand, I don't, I don't know what the average apartment is, five hundred, six hundred, seven thousand, I don't know. But even a thousand square foot, you're talking about thirty one properties, which is a prime area above that. If you have development of restaurants and all this other stuff, I got it. But I'm not sure about above that. Is anybody addressing that?
Addressing what?
Well, I'm I'm just curious. Are we talking about that, everything above that, this is commercial here, but everything above that's for staff, correct?
Everything above that is for staff. The contract that's before you tonight is for sale of the bottom floor, which would be uh commercial.
I understand, but I'm talking about the river front right there, and you got a view. I just don't understand what, okay, I'll I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Counselor Maestri.
You know, um, one of my backgrounds and um education is, is in appraisals. And I just wanna say that when appraisal comes forward, that it takes into consideration the time that it's been vacant. How many days it's been on the market and how many years it's been vacant. And that is what the value is placed on at the, in the building at this time. So we could talk about how it's been vacant for all these years. The the, believe you me, the appraisers figured that when they still quoted us a value of the property. That's all I have to say. I didn't want the people to be misled. Thank you.
Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes five to two. Madam Clerk, we now move into quasi judicial proceedings, item S one.
Item S one, an ordinance annexing unincorporated land, commonly known as the first addition to the Villabella Annexation to the City of Pueblo. Described as eight point zero one eight acres of land located northeast of the intersection of Troy Avenue and Rawlings Boulevard. Introduced March tenth, twenty twenty five by Counselor Brett Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, Mr. President, the council members. The Villabella First uh Addition Annexation is located to the northeast of the intersection of Troy Avenue and Rawlings Boulevard. This property is part of an approximately thirty acre L-shaped area still in Pueblo County's jurisdiction that is entirely encircled by property previously annexed into the city. The applicant intends to develop the proposed annexation area in tandem with the surrounding city zoned area as part of the growing Villabella suburban neighborhood. Since the property is less than ten acres in size, uh an annexation impact report is not required under state statute to be filed with taxing entities uh in which the property proposed to be annexed is within their boundaries. That concludes my report. President Aleth's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number A twenty three oh four, dated January eighth, twenty twenty five, be made part of the record of this hearing.
So order. Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Thank you for that report. This is a public hearing. Is there, oh no, we don't have to do it on this? So Okay, so I don't know why it says on my agenda it's quasi judicial. So for all of you fans out there watching, this is not quasi judicial. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? You don't have to be sworn in.
Jason Allwine, Matrix Design Group, twenty four thirty five Research Parkway, uh Colorado Springs, Colorado, uh here representing the owner developer. Similar to the previous proceedings, uh no further information to add and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Saying none, is there anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing that there is no one else, this hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second? Counselor Flores, questions? Counselor Flores? No? Let's call for the vote. Passes six one. Madam Clerk, S two.
Item S two, an ordinance annexing unincorporated land, commonly known as the second addition to the Villabella Annexation of the City of Pueblo. Described as ten point zero nine four acres of land located northeast, northeast of the intersection of Troy Avenue and Rawlings Boulevard. Introduced March tenth, twenty twenty five by Counselor Brett Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, President Aleth and council members. The Villabella Second Annexation, uh Second Edition Annexation is located to the northeast of the intersection of Troy Avenue and Rawlings Boulevard. This property is part of an approximate thirty acre L-shaped area. Still uh within Pueblo County's jurisdiction, that is entirely encircled by property previously annexed into the city. The applicant intends to develop the proposed annexation area in tandem with the surrounding city zone area as part of the growing Villabella suburban neighborhood. Since the property is less than ten acres in size, an annexation impact report is not required to be filed with taxing entities in which the property proposed for annexation is within their boundaries. That concludes my report. President Aleth, staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number A twenty three oh five, dated January eighth, twenty twenty five, be made part of the record for this hearing.
So order. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Jason Allwine Matrix Design Group, here representing the owner and the developer, nothing further to add, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, is there a second? Counselor Flores, any questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, S three.
Item S three, an ordinance annexing unincorporated land, commonly known as the third annexation of Villabella annexation, third addition to the Villabella annexation of the city of Pueblo, described as seventy nine point six three acres of land located northeast of the intersection of Troy Avenue and Rawlings Boulevard, and adjacent to the Walking Stick Vista Development, introduced March tenth, twenty twenty five by Counselor Brett Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, President President Aleth and staff council members. The Villabella third annexation, third addition annexation is located to the northeast of the intersection, Troy Avenue, Rawlings Boulevard, and adjacent to the Walking Stick Vista Development. The petitioners intend to develop the proposed annexation area in tandem with the nearby city zoned area as part of the growing Villabella suburban neighborhood. An annexation impact report has been filed with the taxing entities in which the property is proposed for annexation and is within their boundaries as required by state statute. That concludes my report. President Aleth's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number A twenty three oh six, dated January eighth, twenty twenty five, be made part of the record for this hearing.
So order. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Jason Allwine Matrix Design Group, representing the owner and developer, nothing further to add, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Latino? Second Counselor Flores? Any questions?
I have one.
Counselor Flores?
I noticed that this this parcel is significantly, well, it's ten times larger than the first first one and close to eight times larger than the others. Is there any significance of the size on these annexations?
The larger annexations in excess of ten acres, they are required by state statute to file an impact report based on ability for utility services, transportation, road extensions, and impacts to schools, estimates of the amount of students that the proposed area being annexed might generate.
So the the first annexation didn't need an impact statement then?
Well, the first and the second ones were less than ten acres, so under state statute, they do require to have.
Here's my last question, which may or may not pertain to this, but that is, is anybody looking or working on eventually, as you keep heading north, even though it's northeast, of of some sort of a bridge going over the Fountain Creek? It just seems like there's there should be an access as we keep going north to get from that area over into I twenty five.
So as part of this development, there are, as the larger seventy nine acre area develops, there's a will be a requirement for connectivity from the roads within that area to connect to Walking Stick Boulevard. Walking Stick Boulevard will connect through North Vista Highlands to Home of Heroes. And then as Homer Heroes extends to the west, that's the corridor in which we're looking at a connection that would cross Fountain Creek and the railroad and connect to the Dillon Interchange.
Yeah, in my mind, it would be a lot more palatable and a lot more customers that would that would buy their houses up there if there was an easier access to I twenty five, especially if you work in Colorado Springs.
Under the North Vista Highlands annexation agreement, there is a transportation impact fee that's collected for each residential dwelling unit at the time of building permit. That isn't necessarily going to provide all of the funds, but it we're in process of looking at other ways to fund the construction of a bridge and a connection to I twenty five.
Has a location been identified?
Not specifically, and I think a lot of that is because of how, what is the best way to be able to design and build a bridge that is able to extend across Fountain Creek, which everyone knows is a very viable. There's a lot of design issues related with Fountain Creek, especially during high flood periods, as well as then being able to go over the railroad there and then connect. The idea is to connect with the Dillon Flyover Interchange with I twenty five. So there isn't a specific alignment, and I think that's going to be coordinated over time with flood control and water issues related to Fountain Creek.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Gomez?
Not pretending to be a real estate baron here, I just want to get clarification. When we talk about annexation, okay, and I don't know all the ins and outs of that, were there any associated or hidden costs when we do that process at all?
According to the annexation agreement, the city, the applicants or the petitioners are responsible for building, connecting to public infrastructure, so water, sanitary sewer, building roads, connecting to the and improving the stormwater system. Once those improvements are completed, then they are accepted by the city, and at that point, then the city does take on the responsibility of maintaining those assets. But the initial completion of the construction for the development of these residential areas will be placed, the burden of that cost is placed on the petitioners and the developers.
Thank you. That helped me a lot. Thanks.
Any other questions? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, S four.
An ordinance emitting portions of both the Villabella planned unit development and the Walking Stick Vista planned unit development in Pueblo County A one to the residences at Villabella planned unit development, introduced March tenth, twenty twenty five by Counselor Brett Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report.
Yes, Council President and Council members. The property owners Caleb Development, Lorsen North Land Corporation, and Eagle Development are requesting to establish the residences at Villabella Planned Unit Development Zoning and the Associated Plan Unit Development Guide. This is for a seven hundred and thirty one point one acre area. The new PUD Zone District will be comprised of portions of both the current Villabella PUD, Walking Stick Vista PUD, and the three Pueblo County A one zone properties that are now annexed into the city of Pueblo. So these three previous annexations would be part of the new PUD Zone District. The residences at Villabella PUD contains the following areas. The eastern portion of the current Walking Stick Vista PUD containing approximately one hundred and four acres. This is between Vision Hills Parkway and Villabella Boulevard. Second area is the undeveloped residential designated areas of the Villabella PUD, which is approximately five hundred and twenty nine acres. This is the land that was purchased by the these property owners from the Thunder Village ownership. The third is the first addition to Villabella Annexation, the eight point zero one eight acres. Next is the second annexation of Villabella containing the ten point oh four nine acres. And the third was the seventy nine point six three seven acre area that was contained in the third annexation area for Villabella. The primary land uses within the residences at Villabella are residential with limited provisions for other uses generally associated with residential developments such as community centers, schools, childcare, student housing, religious assemblies, wireless communication facilities, and limited home occupational uses. The PUD contains provisions for single-family development on generally narrow lots, creating a dense residential fabric with approximately at full buildout, three thousand five hundred and forty five units. The proposed lot widths within the PUD area are single-family detached, minimum thirty five foot wide lots with a minimum of two thousand six hundred square foot lot area. Single-family attached, the going on to the next area, single-family attached, no lot width or area minimums as noted within the PUD Development Guide. Lot width and area minimums for two-family duplex developments may apply, or the standards could be set with a PUD site plan that is approved through the city's Planning and Zoning Commission. The next are two-family duplexes with a minimum fifty foot wide lot and minimum of three thousand five hundred square feet of lot area. Next are multifamily one structure containing three or more dwelling units, minimum fifty foot wide lots, and minimum of one thousand square foot of lot area per dwelling unit. And then lastly, townhomes with a minimum fifteen foot wide lot width, minimum one thousand square foot of lot area per dwelling unit. The gross density will be approximately four point eight four units per acre, which aligns with the five unit per acre maximum density allowed in the suburban neighborhood future land use category as prescribed by the Pueblo Regional Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my report. And President Aleth's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number Z twenty four oh six, dated January eighth, twenty twenty five, be made a part of the record of this hearing.
So order. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Jason Allwine Matrix Design Group, I just want to thank staff with this. This is a pretty substantial update that we went through the past several months with what we feel is a much better document than the one that was approved by fifteen, twenty years ago. Worked really close with Scott and Barrett to refine this and make it a little easier to read and implement as this development moves forward. Happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve? Counselor Boston, is there a second? Counselor Latino, any questions? Counselor Boston? Call for the vote. Passes seven zero. Madam Clerk, S five.
Item S five, an ordinance submitting zoning restrictions to rezone six thirty four Goodnight Avenue from R two Single Family Residential Zone District to B two Subregional Business Zone District, introduced March tenth, twenty twenty five by Counselor Brett Boston.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a staff report.
Thank you, President Aleth. Six thirty four Goodnight Avenue is a four thousand nine hundred sixty eight square foot former midnight church on a sixteen thousand five hundred square foot lot that's located east of City Park in the Aberdeen neighborhood. The church was built in nineteen fifty nine and operated as such until twenty twenty three, when the property was purchased by One Legacy Investments. The new owner would like to repurpose the building as a multipurpose office space and services allowed as uses by right in the B two Zone District. Previous application for rezoning, case Z twenty four oh four, was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission in September, but was denied by City Council on October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. The applicant revised their redevelopment plan to exclude the banquet hall and create an office instructional space instead. The re the purpose, the proposed redevelopment plan is anticipated to generate steady but smaller demand for traffic than the previous assembly hall request. In April of twenty twenty four, the applicant submitted a study completed by Gagliano Engineering, which identified eleven off-street and ten on-street parking spaces. With the new proposed office use and professional service use, the required number of parking spaces is nineteen. The applicant has concurrently submitted an application for a variance to reduce the number of onsite parking spaces from nineteen to eleven. And that application was approved by the Planning and Zoning Zoning Board of Appeals on February twenty sixth, twenty twenty five. The proposed rezoning request conforms with the twenty twenty two Pueblo Regional Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Designation of Urban Neighborhood. The applicant's plan to reduce the, redevelop the property with an office and instructional studio is considered to be compatible with the neighborhood scale commercial development. That concludes my report. President Aleth's staff requests that all documents from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding this matter, case number Z twenty four twenty three, dated February twelve, twenty twenty five, be made part of the record for this hearing.
So order. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give before the Publicity Council is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name into the powered on microphone and address.
Case Prouse, six thirty four Goodnight Avenue, eight one zero zero five. I just wanted to add that the parking for this has been significantly reduced from the parking variance I had previously. This is definitely more in line with the community, less traffic. I personally went around to the surrounding twenty houses and got support from the neighbors for this. Some didn't answer, went back a couple times, still didn't answer, so I'm just curious, were there any emails opposed to this that should I should be made aware of before I leave the stand? No, I have nothing else to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Seeing none, is there anyone here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Seeing none, the hearing's closed. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Counselor Boston, seconded by Counselor Flores. Any questions? Counselor Martinez?
Can we get Mr. Prouse back?
No. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Prouse, last time, it, I believe, it was supposed to be like an event space, right?
Correct.
But then this time, it's going to be more of a office space?
Coworking space, yeah. So multipurpose office use, the use by rights allow medical instructional instructional studios, that type of thing. It's a Monday through Friday, nine to five.
Okay.
Not on the weekends. Maybe occasionally, there might be an art instruction on the weekend, but, you know, there's not going to be more than like ten people for that, so.
Okay, because I guess the hours of operation then would be during the workday, not anything loud at night.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Boston?
I support this.
Counselor Flores? Let's call for the vote. Passes seven zero. As we come to the end, remember that this is the time of season when people are out looking for puppies and kittens. And if you're looking for a puppy, a kitten, an older dog, an older cat, please utilize our local shelters plus our rescues. We take a look at Paws, Cooper's Companion, they're all good. And make sure, whether you adopt or not, that you spay and neuter and put microchips in your in your pets so we can find them when they get lost. With that being said, we are now adjourned.